Thank you so much, everyone that is joining with us tonight. We're going to call our meeting to order and we will begin with our pledge 1.2. And we're so excited to have the fourth grade class, Mrs. Ramirez's class at Thompson Elementary.
My name is Sadie Thompson and we are from Thompson Elementary. We are in the fourth grade, Mrs. Ramirez's class. Today we'll be saying the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, and I hope they were watching tonight. They did a great job and please let them know, we appreciate them. Okay, going back into my screen, we're now at 1.3 approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, motion carry. All right, we are at 1.4 inspirational message and that will be coming from Mr. Tillman.
Well, thank you. First, I want to start by congratulating Miss Inspiration herself, Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. Congratulations on your accomplishment.
Thank you, sir.
And then I want to just thank the students, the parents, the grandparents, the teachers, the classified staff, and the administrators of the district for working hard during this tough COVID-19 educational time. I want to thank the students for continuing their education, even though they could not do it in person. And I know they missed their friends and they're old friends and making new friends. So I know it's been tough. I know they missed their band and all the extracurricular, the sports, the way that it normally happened. So I want to thank them for that. And I want to thank the parents and the grandparents because they really had to step up. They had to find ways to help their students to get the best virtual education possible while still having to go to work and make ends meet at their own employment. And then I want to thank the district teachers for teaching in a way that they did not sign up for. We were thrust into a problem situation and we sought the best way possible. And the teachers really did step up and you had teachers who had to teach our students at the same time accommodating the education of their own children at home. So I want to tell them thank you and let them know that we appreciate them. And thank you to our classified employees for the work that they've done. A lot of the classified employees too have worked from home and had to educate their children. A lot of classified employees were essential workers and had to come to work and made life a lot better for a lot of our students and parents and community. I can't thank the workers that made sure that food got out. And I know it just wasn't the people that work in that area all the time. I've heard about even our campus security officers and other school police officers working to help get some of those meals out. And then I want to thank the superintendent and the administrators because they really had to find solutions to our problems. They had to listen to the community, the parents, the students, and try to find ways to best accommodate the situation that we're in right now. And a special thanks to Harold Volkmer. Dr. Volkmer has been great and I just can't thank everyone enough. And the good thing now is we see the light at the end of the tunnel. I know some meetings ago I mentioned to Dr. Rogers that I was going to ask Dr. Volkmer to look into getting Glenn Heller to do graduations. And Dr. Volkmer with the staff was able to secure that. That's a big deal. So from June 1st to June 5th, our board has made it possible to fulfill a promise that we made. And we said that we would have a live graduation for last year's students and if possible, for this year's students. So lastly, I do want to thank our entire board because I think we've made the right decisions and the decisions were driven by what we knew were best for everyone involved. And when I look at the numbers, thousands of people dying and thousands of people being sick here in our county and our school district, it just gives me great comfort knowing that those numbers would have been higher if we did not make the decisions that we made. So now I hear us bringing the chairs and the furniture back into the classrooms. We're talking about summer school now. We're talking about regular school in August. People are getting vaccinated. We waited the time to let as many people get vaccinated as possible, which in turn makes things much safer. So I'm excited about seeing the dates where people can come back to school. And because of the legislature and the president, we have the funds that we can make sure that we give the best quality education possible, starting with summer school. So I talked to Ms. Christakis earlier and I want to talk to the board to make sure that we have the transportation that's needed for any student that wants to attend summer school. There shouldn't be a kid that can't attend summer school because they can't get to their school site. So I'm sure we'll hear more about that later. But in the end, I just wanted to thank all involved for making the best out of a bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ditto, ditto, ditto. Great. Dr. Volkmer, I'm going to ask the following board members. So let me say this, when we get to 2.0, if Dr. Hill, and I'm just checking to make sure you guys are in the agenda for 2.1. Dr. Wyatt, if you're 2.2. Dr. Flores, 2.3. And 2.4, Ms. Rosales Medina. But before that, Dr. Volkmer, I know we have some special people either watching or somewhere thereabout that we want to acknowledge.
We do thank you, President Rogers. Want to take just a moment to recognize those either new members of our management team or people that have shifted jobs within the management team that are going through our onboarding process. As you know, it's a very intensive process to make sure that they are completely up to speed on how our district operates and how decisions are made, et cetera. And so we want to welcome Kathy Atencio, new vice principal at Rodriguez Prep. Joe Castillo, our director, new director of maintenance and operations. Ryan Rubio, assistant director of special education, came from a principalship. And Kimberly Simpson, coordinator of secondary education. Let's give them all a round of applause and thank you for being part of the onboarding process. Thank you, President Rogers.
Thank you and congratulations to you all. If you're watching, we appreciate you and excited to have you moving to the next level. So now we are at 2 point, if my computer goes right, presentations. So 2.1, recognition of Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. Dr. Hill, are you on?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Whereas as May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others in California and the nation in honoring the more than 20 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders who call America home. And whereas we recognize the achievement of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage in education, business, science, the arts, government, and the armed forces. And whereas the observance allows us to consider the many valuable contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans to the growth and development of our great state and nation. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourages everyone to learn more about their history and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved in second. I just want to say, and Dr. Wyatt had mentioned this probably, how long has it been, Dr. Wyatt? I know and I can see you don't want me to say anything, but I believe Dr. Wyatt falls into this category of one of our firsts and we just want it captured in our history appropriately, right? Dr. Wyatt, he's like, don't say anything. But we do want to acknowledge those firsts of the things that our board members represent. Because right now-
Don't forget Larry Nigle.
Okay, okay, Larry Nigle. And so we want to capture that. Been, you know, it's been mentioned in the community and it's important for us to be able to have that in history. So thank you, Dr. Wyatt and Larry Nigle. And we will take the vote if there's no other discussion. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carry, 2.1, recognition of Williams Syndrome Awareness Month.
Thank you, Madam President. All right. Whereas May is Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about the rare genetic condition that affects an estimated 30,000 people in the United States. And whereas North Park Elementary student Jonathan Martinez, who died on April 10th, 2017, was born with Williams Syndrome, which is characterized by a host of lifelong medical challenges. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims May 2021 as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month and takes this opportunity to honor the memory of Jonathan Martinez and encourages district staff and the community to express their heartfelt appreciation for Jonathan and honor his legacy.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios? Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carry, thank you. 2.3, recognition of Labor History Month.
Whereas May is Labor History Month in California, as declared in AB 2269 and signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown in 2012. And whereas labor history reveals the vital role of labor unions in the establishment of the eight-hour day, the 40-hour week, unemployment insurance, workman's compensation, old age pensions, protection for the sick, equal employment opportunity, and prohibition of child labor, as well as legislation banning discrimination in employment. And whereas labor history shows that American workers were in the forefront of the effort to make free public education available to all children regardless of geography or social and economic status. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District, through its Community Engagement Plan 2.0 and Link Learning efforts, is strengthening the labor force and economic vitality of the cities of San Bernardino and Hyatt by ensuring that students graduate prepared to succeed in college and careers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims May 2021 to be Labor History Month and the schools are encouraged to commemorate this month with appropriate educational exercises that make students aware of the role the labor movement has played in shaping California and the United States. So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios? Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers? Aye. Motion carry. We are now at 2.4, recognition of School Nutrition Employee Week.
Madam President, whereas May 3rd to May the 7th, 2021, is School Nutrition Employee Week. And whereas nutrition meals at schools are an essential part of every student's school day. And whereas the staff of the Nutrition Services Department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to districts' children. And whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas throughout the COVID-19 global pandemic, school nutrition employees continue to work on the front lines, preparing and handing out thousands of meals for families each week, every week. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims May the 3rd through May the 7th, 2021, as School Nutrition Employee Week and expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commands them for their dedication to the children of our community. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers? Aye. Motion carry, thank you so much. We are now 3.0, 3.1. Are there any comments, Ms. Cunningham?
No, there are none.
All right, okay. Well, we will now then move to 3.2, adjournment to closed session. So let us log out and to our viewing audience, we will be back as soon as we can. Thank you. All right, we are back to resume our meeting. Thank you so much for your patience. And we are going to move 4.1, elementary school principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Eurydice Fitz, elementary school principal, Kim Bart, effective date work year and salary to be determined?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers? Aye. Motion carry. Moving to 4.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Isara Ramirez Villa, elementary school vice principal, link and effective date work year and salary to be determined.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios? Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers? Aye. Motion carry. Congratulations to you all. We definitely look forward to seeing you somewhere virtually soon. We want to now move to 4.3, Public Employment Relations Board Case Number LA-CE6535-E. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the settlement agreement between the district and the San Bernardino Teachers Association resolving Public Employment Relations Board Case Number LA-CE6535-E. Under the term of the agreement, the district will pay the equivalent of three days per DM to four certificated bargaining unit members and remove certain documents from their personnel file in exchange for SPTA's dismissal of the Public Employment Relations Board Case and a grievance against the district.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, I'll take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers? Aye. Motion carry. We are now at 5.1, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association Initial Contract Proposal Successor to the District. I will now open the public hearing. And Mrs. Cunningham, are there any comments?
No, they're not.
All right, then I will close the public hearing this time. Be it resolved that the Board of Education received the initial contract proposal for the San Bernardino School Police Officers Association, SBSPOA. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there is no further discussion, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
All right, and Dr. Doughty Rogers? Aye. Motion carry. All right, we are at 6.1, resuming services. Dr. Volkmer? You're on mute.
I picked myself off mute, sorry. Thank you, President Rogers. Board, as you know, about four board meetings ago, we added this section to our board agendas just called discussion time for the board to talk about resuming services as our case rates have come down significantly as vaccinations have been available and been taken. We wanted to talk with the board to give you updates as to what our thoughts are in resuming services. So we've covered everything from sports to in-person assessments for special education students or students pending special education assessment. And I think it's been a healthy way for us to get your direction and guidance in terms of how we reopen and get back to normal systems. And so this evening, we want to bring you, share some information related to the reintegration of our team members into the physical workplace. And we use that term very, very seriously. We chose it with intent reintegration. You know, some of our, some of our team members have not been at their regular workplace for over a year. And while it was certainly a transition to learn how to work remotely away from, you know, your coworkers and your normal equipment, et cetera, it's going to be a transition to come back to work as we, as we see things opening up and it'll require an adjustment just as much as it did before. And so we're going to talk tonight about possibilities in terms of bringing primarily our classified, although some certificated team members back. This also provides us an opportunity to assess our safety systems, all of which are consistent with current guidance. But they're on paper right now. And, you know, it's one thing to have a plan on paper and it's another thing to bring people in and let them experience that and have a chance to work out some of the kinks in the system and make any refinements that are necessary before we have to do it large scale, resuming in-person instruction over the summer and then obviously in the next school year. And so I want to thank our team for developing what we think is a thoughtful and safety-based approach to this effort of reintegrating our team members to the workplace. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Funchess at this time to share some information with you. Thank you, Dr. Funchess.
Dr. Volkmer, thank you for President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, board, members, cabinet. If we can bring up the presentation? If we have that queued up. And so what we have for you tonight, as Dr. Volkmer stated, is a well-thought-out, comprehensive, step-by-step process to reintegrate our employees back into our workplaces. So before that, I did want to start by saying thank you to all of our employees that have done such a wonderful job, turning on a dime to continue to keep our scholars learning and our organization running from home, in person, whatever capacity that they've had to serve in. It's been an all-hands-on-deck approach. And as we look at all the safety measures that have been put in place, my hats off to the IMT team, our M&amp;O department, and everybody that's played a role in getting our sites and departments ready to receive our employees back and more especially, more specifically, our scholars back when it's time. So my hat's off to them. We're going to move to the next slide so that Mr. Vettier can talk about case rates and where we are within the city and county in comparisons. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Funchess, and good evening, board, cabinet, and community. Our COVID numbers continue to hover around four new cases per 100,000. This is keeping us in the moderate or orange tier. These numbers are much better, we all know, than we saw in the past several months where we were substantially in the widespread tier for quite some time. While vaccines are widely available for anyone 16 years or older, we must all remain vigilant, continue to wear our masks and keep distance from others. We are continuing to monitor and adjust to the ever-changing guidance we receive from the California Department of Public Health. And we continue to encourage our community to get vaccinated and continue testing as this helps track any new variants that are popping up within the community. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Funchess. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Please move to the next slide, please. And so as I stated prior, we'll take you through a step-by-step process on what a reintegration might look like and our district readiness to receive employees back into our buildings, meaning our school sites and our district department, our departments, our administrative buildings. Please move to the next slide. And we always start with our purpose, our rationale, our intent. And as was stated earlier, the majority of our San Bernardino City Unified School District employees have worked remotely since March 2020. And it is time for us to begin to reintegrate our employees back into the workplace. Number one, to make sure that we're tapping into this safety mindset and get our employees used to working in an environment where we wear masks, where we socially distance by six feet, where we know the HEPA filters are working to filter the air, where we see all the things that have gone in place to keep us safe. That is very important as well. And to implement a safe and organized return of our employees back into our district and school sites, beginning with our classified staff and also slowly looking at bringing in more of our staff, educators included, and we'll get to that part, teaching from the classroom. We want to align our district preparations with Governor Newsom's proposed reopening of the economy and lifting the COVID-19 restrictions by June 15th. But before that, as you all know, we're preparing for summer school and we're preparing for in-person learning for both the summer and the fall. And so our summer school is happening around June 7th. Governor Newsom's proposed reopening June 15th. Some of our elementary school employees are nine and 10-month employees. So they would be done before summer school. And so it might be a good time to begin to reintegrate them and show them some of the things that we've done and help them get acclimated back into the workplace under the new safety protocols and mitigation strategies. And we also want to align our employee return with the current increase in vaccine availability. Next slide, please. And under the board's direction, we did put out a voluntary survey for employees and we sent it out to our specific employee group, certificated employees, classified employees, our managers and substitutes. And the respondents to the questionnaire are as follows. And I'll go line by line, certificated employees, and talk about each, each area. So our certificated employee respondents, 2,068 respondents. Of those respondents, 1,513 stated that they were vaccinated and 99 said they planned to be vaccinated. So if you put those two amounts together, the 15, 13, and the 99, that would be about 78% of those respondents, which is a good sample size. So we could project from that sample size that 78% of our employees or certificated employees will be vaccinated. That's the thought behind that. Classified, 1,151 respondents. 614 stated that they'd be vaccinated or are vaccinated, excuse me. 101 said they planned to be vaccinated. Putting those numbers together, we can project that 62% of our classified employees will be vaccinated or are vaccinated. Management, out of 257 are our managers. Same, 171 respondents. 134 have already been vaccinated. 10 planned to be vaccinated. We can project 84% vaccination. And then substitutes, 234 respondents, 176 vaccinated, 19 planned to be. Taking that data, we can project 83% vaccinated employees for substitutes. These are projections based on the sample sizes that we have before you. So hats off to our communications team, IMT, making sure that vaccine information was out there, giving our employees timely information. And hats off to our employees that want to be vaccinated, even though we're not requiring it, by providing that information to us so that we can plan accordingly. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And these, this is the work that's going on right now to have safe and organized reintegration or repopulation of our administrative buildings and our school sites. So right now, the COVID nineteen training that's going on consists of COVID nineteen safety protocols and mitigation strategies, training our employees on proper mask wearing, uh, sanitize sanitizing of the hands, uh, proper pre-screening before you come to work, um, screening once you get to work and all the things that go on with keeping yourself and your fellow colleagues safe at the work site. The second part of this process is to be, would be to develop work schedules that are in line with safety protocols. Meaning there might be a possibility or probability for rotational schedules so that everyone is not in the building at the same time. We can rotate employees in, meaning some employees may work on a Monday, Wednesday schedule. Some may report to work on a a Tuesday, Thursday schedule. All others work remotely while we have this flexibility during integration. So right now, our sites, our school site leaders and our department managers are drafting out schedules to keep employees safe returning to our buildings and our sites and departments. Our safety inspections are also going on behind the scenes. Uh, our prevention, safety prevention branch, uh, doing their job, visiting our school sites, visiting our departments and our administrative buildings to make sure that we have plexiglass in place, to make sure that we have proper signage up, to make sure that we have everything that we need to, uh, have our employees screened before they go into our buildings, make sure that we have, uh, masks and such. So hats off to our safety inspection team. And then the next, uh, piece would be also to communicate out to our employees what we've done with all the preparations. And not just to communicate it out in a way to just share the information, but to make sure that they understand that we value them. We need them back at work to prepare for summer school and school in the fall. And we value the work that they provide for the district. So messaging from our superintendent's office, messaging, joint communications through our unions and also from HR as well. And with all these things together, we feel like we'd be ready to integrate our employees back into our buildings, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Next slide, please. And back in September, uh, we brought you, Board, information on educators working from the classroom and the probability of that. And there are a few things that needed to be in place for us to feel comfortable with doing that and that you see on the left side of our screen. The health and safety protocols, uh, technology and connectivity, which has been worked on and strengthened. Uh, coordinated schedules, what I ju- which I just spoke of and being able to have rotational schedules with our employees. Administrative supervision, having our managers report back and be on-site and in the building when our employees return. A strong contact tracing system so that should there be an exposure, we would know exactly what to do to track down and make sure that all our employees stay safe from that exposure. And then having our support staff on campus, meaning our classified employees and those who support our educators and educating our scholars. As we looked around our, to our surrounding districts, uh, we surveyed Redlands, Fontana, Corona Norco, Riverside, uh, Rialto, Fontana, and all the districts that have their classified employees back and employees reporting to work. They have these protocols in place that I just spoke of. And we also have them. And so we feel prepared and that we will be even more prepared come May tenth to begin to bring back our employees, to get them acclimated back to our sites or back in our sites in our, in our departments, to get them used to social distancing in the workplace, to get them used to wearing the mask and 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 screening and and such, to take advantage of all the good that we've done to make them safe at work. And so for our educators, uh, we're teaching from the classroom. Should they still want to do that, there would be a possibility as long as we have support staff on campus and as long as we have them situated on the scheduling, we can work with schedules to make sure that we can accommodate. And I want to thank you for listening into the, uh, presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Funchess. And Mr. Tillman, were you able to unmute now?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So, um, two things. Um, on the, on bringing, um, classified staff back, I still want to make sure that we remember that, uh, the district itself is still doing distance learning. So you're going to have some employees that can work from home, um, almost as effectively as they can at the site. We should be able to accommodate those who still have children at home that have to do remote learning. So if we can find ways to do it, I hope that we're saying we're going to continue to do that until we come back to, to school. And then, um, on the, the summer school, what schools are going to have summer school? And are those summer school, uh, offering going to be in-person?
Right now, Mr. Tillman, we're looking at all of our school sites offering summer school. Um, and that would be in-person. Uh, Mrs. Applegate, if you wanted to add anything to that, if I missed anything, please share.
No, thank you, Dr. Funchess. Mr. Tillman, we will have some details for you in the next presentation.
And then, uh, and then you'll talk about, I'm assuming if all sites are going to, I mean, all summer schools will be on-site, then also, uh, there will be some, um, offering for parents who want their kids to continue virtual. Is it going to be a virtual summer school also?
We have virtual summer school in the high school for credit recovery. We do not have it at the elementary school right now.
And, and with the survey, are there parents that want it?
We will explore that and look to see how many are interested. We are just, we just now opened the registration link to see who's interested in in-person.
Well, I guess, but, but my concern is, because sometimes we mess up with the surveys. I want to make sure there's a button there that says, if I had to, I would want to, uh, have virtual summer school for my student because I still uh, have some concerns. For instance, uh, there, there are no vaccines offered right now for people under, what, is it sixteen? So I'm sure there are parents that have concerns about, uh, their student, that they have of health issues or precondition, pre, pre-existing conditions. So some parents might still have some fear there, and I don't want them to be uh, eliminated from being able to allow their students to participate in summer because we all feel there's a lack of, uh, learning that took place this previous year. So I just want to make sure there's a box that says, yeah, you know, I want to go to summer school, but I'm not going to allow my child to go to summer school in person, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. We'll take care of it with the team.
Okay, and then finally, so, uh, Dr. But just so I'm clear, you, you are looking at, uh, allowing, uh, or I'm, I'm not, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But is there any consideration being given to allow, uh, right now or, or, or at some time in the near future for teachers that want to go back into their classroom and teach from the classroom in this current school year?
So, Mr. Tillman, yes, um, as we bring in support staff and we have schedules that align with the proper number of support staff on campus, bringing in teachers is a possibility. Yes, sir.
And when you say support staff, what are we talking about?
Classified staff members, like office staff, um, clerk, secretaries.
And do we know what the minimum of staffing is that it would have to occur in order to have, uh, teachers, uh, teach from their classroom?
That's some work that we're doing right now behind the scheduling. Um, and so that's work that we're, we're, we're taking on right now, Mr. Tillman. To make sure proper staffing for any teachers that want to be on campus.
And, and where we at? We're moving the furniture back into the classroom. Are we working on doing that also?
We are working on doing that and we should have an update soon for you on that.
Uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Tillman, thank you. Um, Dr. Flores?
I have several questions. Um, I think that some of the, uh, thank you, Mr. Tillman, for raising all those issues because some of them I had as well. And I think the summer school or this opening of schools is predicated on the enrollment of how many students are going to want school. And I was just thinking the same, um, question, what, what constitutes the ratio, the ratio of kids with teachers and, and, and classified, um, to be, um, at a school? And, um, my second question, that's my concern. The second question is, uh, Mrs. Applegate, when does the, the summer school, um, enrollment deadline, uh, end?
Let me look at that for you. One of my team members is on here. I believe they had the link. Uh, they can answer that. I know it just opened on Friday, but I'll see when the end date is.
And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, if we don't have a lot of kids uh, or parents who want their kids to come to summer school, I think it's, it's good that we're offering in-person, but like Mr. Tillman said, um, there may be parents that are still leery about sending their kids, um, to in-person. So we should offer, um, a virtual if that's, you know, um, what they want, you know, and so forth. So I, I mean, I, I think we need to be very flexible on that, um, in terms of that. And then, uh, my other, uh, question is to Dr. Funchess, couple of questions, Dr. Funchess.
Hmm.
Uh, how did you determine those percentages that you showed? Could you go to that slide?
Sure, if you can bring the slide back up.
Yeah. How did you determine that the percentages of, of, of are classified and everyone, because I did some math.
Uh huh.
The ones that said they got vaccinated and were going to go get vaccinated and it didn't come out to what you said. That it wasn't eighty-two or eighty-four or whatever, or seventy percent.
So these are, can you see the, uh, slide?
Oh, yeah, that, right. That was not certificated. I did it for classified. And I, I, uh, yes, a hundred and one, one thousand one hundred and fifty-one, um, said responded, but the vaccinated ones were six fourteen and, and a hundred and one plan to get it. Um, and so that came out to like twenty, uh, let me just a minute, I gotta go to my cell. That came out to only twenty-seven point seven percent of classified that would be vaccinated. Uh, and then it's a moving target, I know. So it's hard to determine because they're going to open up or they already opened up for everybody to get vaccinated, correct? That wants to.
Yes, and so this is a sample, a sample size. So I'll explain, I'll explain the math, Dr. Flores. So the, if you take the six hundred and fourteen and you add the one oh one to it, that gives us seven hundred and fifteen.
Right.
That'd be either vaccinated or plan to be vaccinated. And then you divide that by the number of the, uh, respondents and you get a sixty-two percent. So it's a projected, uh, amount that might be vaci- that would be.
That's a false, that's a false percentage in my point of view because we're not sure that the other ones will be vaccinated in time, you know, in another month or so. I mean, I, I don't, I, I, I would not want to put any of our employees in danger uh, if they're not vaccinated. Um, and I know we need people to come on board, so somehow we have to figure out a way of, of, um, maybe asking those that are vaccinated to, to come back. And as people are vaccinated and cleared, uh, I mean, like Dr. Volkmer said, it's a progression, right? Uh, a progression and, uh, health and safety to me is prim- primary in terms of, of, um, you know, being thoughtful about not just our kids, our families, but also our employees. And so, uh, I do know that we have an agreement with certificated, uh, where they will be distance learning till the end of the year. Did we sign such a, a agreement with classified?
That's what, Dr. Flores, uh, we agree, safety is of utmost, uh, concern. And the numbers there are projected, uh, vaccinations and, and as you know, we aren't able to ask, have you been vaccinated in order to bring them back? And so with our classified, uh, MOU, what we've done was we put language in there that we can ask for our classified employees to return as long as we give them ample opportunity. And so one of the ways that we're doing that to keep everyone safe is to put or to implement, uh, rotational schedules so that we're only having a few people in our offices or in our buildings on a daily basis to make sure that we get them acclimated back to wearing masks, what the safety protocols are like and making sure that people are feeling safe within our building.
Well, I, I just. I know, my fear is I've been reading about all the different variants. And, uh, even though Mr. Matiers sa- showed the, the, uh, the, uh, you know, the ratios, they're going up. He didn't show that they're going up, but they're going up. And so it's airborne. This is airborne and I, I'm just really concerned. And I just want to express that to, to all my colleagues, board members. And I want the public to know that, that, you know, this is a deadly disease. Uh, this is not just, you know, we're going to wash our hands, put our mask on and, and, you know, have the distance. Uh, I mean, you could do that when you, you know, go to the store, but you can leave in like fifteen, twenty minutes. They're going to be there the whole day. And so, um, I, I, I just, I think we need more details. I think we should, have you asked the classified staff what, uh, their recommendations are?
So.
For, for aggressively, you know, meaning who will come in and how and, and what?
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Um, two things. Uh, right now, we have it, we average about five hundred classified employees working across the district now and we're keeping them safe. Um, uh, make sure that they're wearing a mask and practicing the proper protocols and procedures and safety mitigation. So we've done that and hats off to the district for that. In terms of the, uh, uh, classified staff and asking the MOU that we worked out and we were at the table for three months with our classified, uh, union, uh, making sure that we were putting everything in place. And then our classified members got a chance to review that MOU and vote on it and it was ratified and voted on. And so with this plan, we'll communicate out to our classified, uh, employees. We'll make sure that they understand what, what the expectations are for safety. We'll assure them of their safety. Um, and we'll, we'll bring them back with much with ultimate care. And that's our plan so that we can reintegrate.
My question to you, Dr. Funchess, have you shared this with the leadership?
Yes, I did. I've shared that with union leadership.
And ha- and what was their response?
So their response, um, was not anything against it, just making sure we follow the MOU and follow of the guidelines set forth in that agreement, giving our employees time and making sure that we keep them safe according to Cal OSHA guidelines, uh, California Department of Public Health guidelines and keeping everyone safe. Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Well, I still am voicing concern, uh, serious concern, uh, especially for our employees who are taking care of, you know, um,
Sure.
Parents and, and so forth and, and who they come in contact with, so.
We'd be able to work with those employees, um.
Right.
Right now, we're being flexible. We can flex, uh, create flex schedules. And we definitely want to take care of our employees if they have family members of, as a matter of fact, that's part of, uh, the Senate Bill ninety-five information in there. And we know there's hardships. So HR, working with managers, will be able to work one-on-one with employees that may need extra support or extra time. And we're flexible with scheduling right now. So that's a part of this return to be flexible with scheduling. Um, so that we can, you know, look at each person individually and see what their needs might be.
Well, if you follow through with the flexibility, then, um, I think that our classified should, uh, personnel, people should know this. Uh, and that, and I was going to ask you, how many of the five hundred that came in, uh, got COVID?
So I was looking at some data just, uh, before we, uh, came on tonight, that we keep track of all the number of positive cases. And the number of positive, uh, cases that happened in our district, positive case after being exposed at a site has only been four in our district. Positive cases in the district. Uh, that's throughout this whole COVID.
And that, those are the only ones that reported, right? Not.
We do have.
They don't have to report, right?
They don't have to report, but it would be, it would be who, that would be very beneficial if they did so that we can through the contact tracing system.
Right. And I just want to reiterate, I, I, I really don't, um, believe these numbers that you projected up are, uh, are valid and you, you say they're projections. Well, projections don't mean anything. I want concrete data. And so those percentages are, uh, inflated. And so those percentages are inflated. And I just want you to know, I don't want you to argue with me. I'm just telling you that they're inflated. Thank you.
Dr. Flores, thank you. We can bring that information back for you.
Okay.
Dr. Flores, uh, the closing of the summer school registration will be May seventh. We opened the link on Friday and we have over sixteen hundred elementary school kids who have signed up and over three hundred middle. And I have not checked the high school for today. And we will work with the sites to reach out to see who is interested in distance.
Well, sixteen hundred isn't very many right now.
We just opened it on Friday.
On Friday, okay. Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me hear from, yes, uh, Ms. Rosales Medina.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to clarify. So the, the presentation, Dr. Funches, that you presented, is that for both classified and certificated? Or will there be a separate one, um, later on?
Both.
Both, okay. And that's for, um, our, our teachers as well. So then one, one of the questions I do have is, and I think you might have answered it, but I just wanted to clarify, um, were the teachers and classified, um, were the certificated and classified employees part of a discussion? Or was this something that the district started working on and, um, you know, coming up with solutions on what they, what they feel that's needed? Or has this been a collaboration, in collaboration with, um, both certificate and classified?
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Medina for the certificated side with the teachers working from their classroom. Uh, we do work closely with, uh, Ashley and our SBTA, uh, union. Um, should there be any teachers that wanna report back to their classroom, we work with them. So that is a collaboration. In terms of the classified plan that you see here, to bring back our employees into our sites and departments, it was part of the negotiated MOU and this came from that. Um, if you're asking, have we shared it, uh, more broadly out? I think we, we can, we can go back and do a little bit more homework on that.
Okay, cause I know that, you know, as many, many board members, you know, we get to either, you know, meet people out at the public, um, at the grocery store and a few, um, weeks ago I met with, um, both parents and teachers. And so one of the things is that many of them are, we don't know what's gonna happen, what's going on. So I know you communicated with, um, SBTA president, Ashley Alcala. So, but it's the, it, the information is not trickling down. And so I, I think it's needed from the district. Is that part of your communications? Are we planning to coordinate a subcommittee where teachers will now, you know, talk about how they feel about coming back? Will that, what does that look like? Um, including parents, students, I mean, you name it, to make sure that they're part of the conversation where it's not that we tell them what to do, which I understand we're going to do, but we, remember, they're the ones that, um, are in the classrooms. There are the parents that are taking their kids to school or may not want to. Um, so I, I, if you haven't, um, I would strongly suggest that we create a, a committee, a subcommittee where you include parents, teachers, students and, and certificated where they have this conversation of what the next school year will look like. And as soon as we do that, the better. So that way they can fully prepare as well, uh, mentally. Um, and whatever they need to with regarding, you know, parents going back, having their children go back to school and so forth. But have you, have you had those conversations yet or no?
So, Dr. Funches, I could respond, miss.
Yeah, I would say that work is underway and I'll let, um, Rachel chime in on that. There's a steering committee and some work going on. We open. Thank you, Rachel.
Absolutely. So, um, Ms. Medina, in the next presentation, we will, I'll share with you what the, where, what we've done and where we're going and, and that'll include the communication plan and the, um, task force that will get started. So.
And I'll wait for that when you present that then. Okay.
Questions, of course, be happy to answer those.
Okay, no, no, but that's, that's, that's helpful because I wanted to make sure, um, if you're gonna talk about it, might as well wait till then. Now, when we're looking at the education portion and, and Mr. Tillman mentioned it, you know, we're gonna have parents that, um, you know, or students that don't wanna go back to school. And, and we know for a fact that there has been students thriving um, through the virtual program. We know that there are students who have been struggling through the virtual program. Um, but then this is an opportunity for us to really envision, uh, revision of what education looks like, especially for those that the system hasn't really been working for them. And, uh, we see how, um, you know, other schools, either through private schools, charter schools that they're doing, um, creating environments that has helped all students. And those that don't necessarily, um, you know, the, the educational system hasn't been working for them traditionally, as we would say, for them to come on campus. So I really would look at making sure that if we haven't started the conversations regarding virtual academy, having those conversations with our teachers, having those opportunity for our teachers to teach from home, if that's something that they choose. So, um, having students, uh, learn from home and having fa- flexibility for parents as well. So, um, if we haven't had those conversations, another thing that I would love for us to really talk to our teachers about as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Medina. You'll hear a little bit more about that in the next presentation.
Perfect.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one quick one and I apologize to the presenters cause I usually wait until the very end. But since this came up about the vaccination, uh, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the answer. It's my understanding we cannot mandate any employee to get vaccinated. Is that true or not true?
That is correct, Dr. Hill. We can't mandate, uh, any vaccinations at this time.
All right. That's, that's my only question at this time. I'll wait until the end. Thank you.
Dr. Hill, just so you know, that is the end of this particular presentation. This is the end.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
All right. And so next up we have Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Dr. Funches, for the presentation. Really do appreciate you and your staff for putting that together. Um, one, you know, I, I did have a question and my colleagues have actually asked quite a few of them, but just for clarification, on, on the five hundred classified staff that came, that are currently working for us, you said, uh, four had tested positive. Was that, um, tested positive and contracted at work? We don't know.
So, Mr. Wyatt, over time, that happened at our site. So during the whole pandemic, four that we know were exposed at our sites are.
Okay, thank you for my, and were they all at one side or were they different sites?
Different sites.
Sites, okay, thank you. Um, I, I will say this, I'm, I'm definitely in agreement with bringing our staff back. You know, we're a huge organization and doing so is gonna take time. I, I know that just from our transition back, um, at my work and so with as many employees we have, the transition's gotta be gradual and obviously slow. Uh, we definitely need to get people acclimated back to a workplace. Uh, I think, I'm very thankful for the folks that are working right now. And obviously we have a number of staff that are in the workplace, you know, are classified. I'm sure some certificated as well as our management. And, uh, so I appreciate all those that have been there and some of you have been there from the get-go. So thank you again. Um, in regards to educational options, I, I'm definitely in support of bringing our students back this summer. Uh, wow, I'm pretty impressed that we had actually two thousand students, almost nineteen hundred students respond in forty-eight hours, basically two days. Uh, maybe if we count the weekend, then we could say four days. I don't know if the, the surveys opened during the weekend, but that, that's a significant number of students. Two thousand students is, is almost the size of a small district, when we look at small districts. So I think we really need to keep that in consideration and have all options available for our students. Uh, we definitely need to have distance learning, in my opinion. Uh, you know, if kids wanna go to summer school or we start doing these extended learning opportunities, you know, that we've been talking about, then no, I don't think we should deny access to any of them in regards to either in-person or distance learning model. And as many of my colleagues have already stated, you know, our, some of our kids are thriving with that model. And, and you know, I know that's come up even for next year in regards to having, uh, distance learning continuing. And we may be seeing that in a little bit. And if I am be, being premature, I apologize. But you know, if we have like a e-academy, uh, we know some of our, our colleague districts, uh, local to us already have those in place. They're extremely successful. And I think it's a great option for our kids. So that's something I think we should pursue. In regards to our, our classrooms, um, you know, one, how will we determine which classrooms at each site are where our students will return? And once we do identify those classrooms at those sites, um, we will ensure that they have the appropriate EPG and, you know, protective, um, barriers in place like the model classroom we've seen, so that I am asking will be the case at all our sites?
Sure, Dr. Wyatt. Um, I think some of the information that you're asking for will be discussed in our next presentation, but uh, Eric wants to chime in on any of that right now.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Just, yeah, Dr. Wyatt, we're working with, uh, Ms. Applegate and her team as they begin to identify the number of students and, and classrooms. Uh, we're going to visit those particular classrooms at each individual school to make sure uh, that they are at a hundred percent readiness as well as, um, how we would accept the students, dismiss the students, uh, feed the students. So it's gonna be a slow and steady process like you described, um, uh, to make sure that it is done safely.
And then of course our, our entry points of access to our sites, uh, our classified, uh, staff that are working up front. We're gonna, I'm sure have all the Plexiglas or tempered glass barriers up there ready for them and temperature, uh, reading monitor devices that I've seen everywhere. So, you know, I think you've been doing a phenomenal job where I have been uh, and, and seen the protections in place. And as we've said all along, we have I think been a board that has emphasized and supported safety, number one, and always. And I know we will when we come back. So appreciate your time.
Can you, Dr. Wyatt?
All right. Mr. Tillman, you said you had another question?
Yes, uh, two quick things. One, I, I think it's a great idea, uh, um, Dr. Funches, that you are going into this next phase of asking folks to come back. Uh, we did it here at my job. Uh, I had, um, eighty percent of my staff, uh, working remotely. The county come in, came in and said, we want everyone to come in at least one day a week. When that happened, I nearly got, uh, like five, uh, people responding and said, hey, uh, I have pre-existing conditions and so, uh, I don't wanna come in. And then, uh, so then the, the HR said, okay, then you have to give us a doctor's note.
Right.
Uh, now, some of the people at that time, uh, were already vaccinated. And, but decided that even though they were vaccinated, they didn't think that it was safe to come back to work. But what we found was that you, you won't find a doctor to say that if you've been fully vaccinated, that's not safe for you to come back to work. And once you're fully vaccinated, you're not gonna have a doctor's note saying you can't come back to work because you have fears of COVID. So, once you get fully vaccinated, then it's expected that, uh, you will, uh, return to work. But, but just by asking folks to come back, you start that conversation. And it was good for everybody to have that learned experience. The same thing's gonna happen here. And, and, and then remember too, everyone doesn't wanna be vaccinated. So, you know, earlier comments made it sound like, uh, people only gonna come back once they're vaccinated. You have some folks who are gonna come back to work and have already decided they're not getting, they're not gonna get vaccinated. They'll, they'll do the social distancing, they'll wear the mask. They have to do that. We can demand they wear masks and do the distancing in the safe part, but you cannot demand that they get, uh, vaccinated. That's just something I think we all should be aware of. And then I had the two final questions on the, when we're doing the, the, even the summer school, for instance. Cause you said you guys talked about doing summer school in-person and for, I think, uh, Ms. Appigal said for the high school, she, she already decided that they were gonna do virtual also. And now we're looking at doing virtual for middle and elementary. Um, that's what I think I'm hearing. But my question is, are we gonna have dedicated teachers that are in-person? And then dedicated teachers that are virtual? And we're not gonna try to have a in-person teacher do in-person teaching and virtual at the same time?
That's excellent.
That, that is not the model. We will have in-person teachers and we will have, um, online or distance learning teachers. They will not be doing both.
Okay. And, and, and this is an important question. And I, I do realize the numbers are gonna drive everything. So I don't want us to, to overcommit uh, because it's gonna take resources and people to allow us to do that if we do that for the regular school year coming up. But that would be the, the way that we think is best. But I, I don't, Dr. Funches, are, are you feeling that we're gonna have the resources to say that we're gonna have teachers that are onsite teaching? And then if there are peers that opt out for the virtual, it gotta be a separate educational, um, experience?
For summer school, Mr. Tillman?
For the, no, regular school year.
So yes, uh, we are putting everything that we can in place right now to prepare for that. Uh, even if we have to tap into our substitute teachers in the beginning, we feel like we'll be prepared for whatever models we need to consider for the school year. Yes, sir.
And I, I, I have to say, I, I just saw an article where they said in San Francisco, they can't find enough substitute teachers to sub for, uh, some of their virtual classes. So, you know, we, we have to, we have to create a system based on the resource that we have. So, and I'm just, I'm just saying this to be open and honest to everyone, because we don't control all of the variables, right? So we would like to be able to have in-person teaching with a teacher doing that. And then another part is just, um, virtual, but maybe if the virtual part, we can expand more, be more flexible versus the, uh, in-person, uh, instruction. But, uh, that's, that's good to hear. That's the direction. And that's what we're doing for summer school. And I'm sure we'll hear more about, um, regular school year once we get closer. Thank you.
Ms. Sabios?
Can you hear me okay?
Uh, you're very low, but we're gonna try.
Okay, so I'm gonna speak up. I, I always have trouble with my computer audio. So hopefully you do hear me. If not, just let me know and I'll speak louder. Um, yeah, so I just also wanted to kind of, uh, ask a clarifying question. I think Dr. Wyatt kind of asked, uh, the question that I kinda had in mind, but just again, um, so the four, uh, employees that tested positive for COVID, that was out of five hundred?
It wasn't not a five hundred. That was out of all of our classified staff members that have been reporting. The five hundred was just the average daily number of classified employees that are reporting to work at this time in-person, Ms. Sabios.
So what is the number? Four hundred, uh, four hundred out of how many?
So our classified staff workforce is about twenty-six hundred or two thousand, five hundred and eighty.
But not all of them are back at work.
Not all of them are reporting to work in person, no. They're, the majority are working remotely.
So how many are reporting to work?
So on a daily basis, we average anywhere between four and five hundred. I'd say five hundred, just to make sure that we, we, we account for the number of employees in our campuses, on our campuses and in our departments.
Got it, got it. Okay, so it's four. So yeah, about five hundred. So, um, the, out of, out of those four people that have tested positive, um, have any of them tested? Have any of them been at the same location? Do they work at the same sites?
So there were a couple, there were a couple at the same site out of those, uh, four. Uh, yes, there were, Mrs. Sabios.
Okay, got it, got it.
We've covered that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so then also, I, I just kinda wanted to, um, basically state kind of my, my position or where I stand as far as returning, um, you know, back to school. Um, even before coming to the board, I have always been of the opinion of, you know, having choice for, for, for all. There are gonna be some people that want to come back and that includes employees, parents, students that are willing to assume the risk, right? And there's others that are not going to want to. And so I think that, um, you know, before it wasn't so much so possible because there were restrictions from state and county, right? That, that we just couldn't. But now that the cases have gotten down, I don't see why we can't move in that direction. Um, I also agree, you know, we do have a huge district and it's, coming back is going to be, um, a, a process within itself. And I think that, um, the sooner we kind of start initiating that process, the better prepared we will be for when everybody has to come back. Um, just because we won't know, we don't know what we don't know until we start doing it, right? It's, it's trial and error. Hopefully not at anybody's, you know, um, uh, uh, risk. However, there's always a risk, right? That's just part of, part of it. Um, I also heard getting vaccinated is currently not a requirement that the district, you know, can, you know, have or, or place on, um, employees or even students. So with that being said, that means that at some point we are going to have to get everybody back to work, regardless of whether they've been vaccinated or not. And so, um, or whether they even intend on getting vaccinated. And so, again, I think that this, those are important things that we need to consider. Um, because we are moving in that direction as a whole, you know, as a state, other districts are doing it. Um, and I think that, that we do need to begin to consider some of those, some of those, um, points that at some point we're gonna have to come back. You know, um, and, and the hope is that everybody wants to get vaccinated, that if everybody does get vaccinated, so that that transition is, you know, easier for everyone. Um, so and I have more questions in regards to summer school, but I'll just wait until the presentation. Uh, but I did wanna make sure that I, that I did, um, you know, kind of state my, my views on that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. And again, yes, Board, there's gonna be, the other big presentation is gonna have some more major details in there, especially around summer. major details in there, especially around summer school. So thank you for your comments. I think, you know, we've all asked this. I don't want to repeat the same questions again. And I do agree as the district prepares to, you know, we, there's got to be a preparation stage, right? So that it is not the day of doing it for so for certain. One of my concerns is, I did hear you say, Dr. Funches, is that when we talked about the some, maybe the the option of some coming on certain days or not the other days, would that be a part of the process of as as we gauge who or the willingness or or how in that very beginning stage? Because you said there could be, you know, certain days they come and then you switch out another staff or something like that. And maybe that's something that can be, um, you know, involved in that optional process as we're acclimating people back. Because, you know, I can't say loud enough that HIPAA, we we can't ask those questions anyway. You know, when it comes to it and 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 asking and and yes, we can only project because we can't know, you know, that's like looking into someone's medical record. That's just something we can't do. But I just recommend, you know, into everything else that you heard tonight, that as we look at that acclimation, if there's going to be a few days here, a few days there, and we're looking to have consistency, you know, at the site, maybe that's something you can also add into the equation or perhaps even already thought about. So. All right. So I think those are all of our questions. Thank you again for the presentation. This is again, as we've said before, there is no roadmap to any of this. And so we're building it into doing what is is safe and 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 sure, you know, as 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 much as we possibly can. And as, you know, Ms. Sabios, you you said, there's always going to be a portion of some, you know, uncertainty there. But we definitely want to make sure we're error on the side of really being cautious with that. Because we know even in our jobs, you know, we're all having to face that kind of inch by inch coming back. So. So thank you for your presentation. And if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead then and move into our public comments. We're about four minutes um behind on our public comments, but we're doing good. And so if Ms. Cunningham, are there public comments? I'm going to go ahead and read my statement here. If you, I'm sorry, I'm way in the bottom of it. This is the only time that the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matters jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Pursuant to the provision of the governor's executive order in twenty-nine twenty dated March seventeen, twenty twenty, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act are suspended. If you would like to make a live comment at the district board meetings, a registration form is required. Forms can be found on the district website and Facebook. This registration form is available for twenty-four hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and will close at four thirty PM on the day of the meetings. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person and all comments submitted on one subject will be will be provided no more than thirty minutes total. A timer will be visible on the screen during your comments. We ask that you monitor your time. Participants are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. All right, Mrs. Cunningham?
All right, thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers. Um, the first speaker will be Tammy Martinez. Ms. Martinez, if you're available, can you please unmute?
Hi, good evening.
Evening.
Sorry, let me get my computer in here. Um, good evening, Board. I'm Tammy Martinez. I'm a representative, one of the directors from SOAR Charter Academy. It's been a while since we've been able to pop in and give any updates, so we just wanted to stop in this evening and just kind of just keep you alert on what we've been doing. Um, we've been having our staff go through a lot of safety training through Cal OSHA and through the Health Department over the past many, many months regarding COVID and safety on campus. We did return to on-campus learning for those students and parents who were wanting that. We are continuing with distance learning as well. Last week, we brought back some of our K through second graders. Um, went wonderful. So this week, today, we started with our third and fourth graders. That also seemed to go pretty smoothly and we'll be adding grade levels over the next few weeks to hopefully finish the year off with some on-campus learning safely. Our teachers and our staff in general have spent a lot of extra time above and beyond getting their classrooms ready, um, safely distanced. We've purchased masks and all the the equipment needed for the school. Each of our classrooms is now equipped with two air filters at the front of the classroom and the back of the classrooms. Um, so we've been following all the guidelines needed and we, of course, do have those that prefer to stay home with distance learning and we are accommodating that. We have ninety percent of our staff vaccinated, but one hundred percent of our staff working on campus is vaccinated. The ten percent that has not yet been vaccinated are working with our distance learners and at home. So coming on our campus, we do have one hundred percent vaccinated staff. We will be offering summer school as well to address the learning loss that we all know is going to be evident in some of our students who have struggled through this distance learning time. And we just look forward to the district getting back as well. And like like it was said, there is no roadmap. We don't know what's to come over the summer months. Um, we're just hoping that things can slowly but surely get back to normal in-person learning for our students in our city. So we thank you for your cooperation with us. We've we've contacted the district many times with questions and guidance and making sure we're following along the correct path as well. So we do appreciate all of you guys and the district as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Terry Boykins. If Terry is available, please unmute.
All right, thank you. Terry Boykins, Project Fighting Chance Executive Director, um, National Chair, Board Members. I just want to report Project Fighting Chance in twenty nineteen, pre-COVID, had entered relationships with the Griffith Company in Bill, California to talk about the impact of mental health of youth and tomorrow's labor force, particularly as it relates to attrition and mental wealth, mental well-being and workplace productivity. And in this private-public relationship, we had decided to construct a tranquility garden at the Home and Naval Service. And that basically was postponed because of COVID-nineteen. On April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, we dedicated the Youth Tranquility Garden for Mental Wellness at the Home and Naval Service um, for Project Fighting Chance. And we want to invite all of the board members to come by and see exactly what's happening in that community as relates to us promoting the importance of youth mental wellness. Uh, we have cleared the land that was primarily full of rubbish. It had an old storage container on that property, a lot of weeds. Uh, the Griffith Company has come in with their generous donation and their support and their expertise. And we have installed drought-resistant plants. The layout is pretty significant and we want to definitely have you all come by at your leisure to really experience what the youth in that community and that Project Fighting Chance are experiencing. In addition to that, Mr. Jesse Nichols, part of the Home and Naval Service, many of you all may have known him with regards to food distribution. We dedicated a bench in his honor as well as a portrait that will be put in the boxing gym for all the youth that will understand who he was and what he meant to this particular program after school. And Jesse was continuously involved with making sure that he knew what was going on with us in terms of after-school program, competition, and just having the importance of making sure that food and security amongst young people was being mitigated. The other part that I wanted to share with regards to the Tranquility Garden for youth is at the beginning of the year, we wanted to come back after the Christmas break with something very motivating for our young people. And so we started Motivational Mondays, which was a four-week series of one particular topic with an individual that would come in and represent something to start the week of motivation for our youth at Project Fighting Chance. And we started off talking about the resources that were available in the Peachtree. And parents and students alike would know what was going on, what was available to them, and they've taken great advantage of that. We then moved into working with Victor Community Support Services and talked about the importance of mental health and mental first aid that the youth were able to engage in very interactively. And talked about issues with depression. They talked about issues with virtual learning, distance learning. We also talked about the impact of body changes with regards to being dormant in terms of childhood obesity. From there, which is the series that we're on currently, um, with Mr. Randy Olsen of your district. And we're talking about family engagement and we're talking about the importance of family and communicating with the family as a result to be in this COVID-nineteen environment. And as we're talking about going on reopening about how parents who are actually involved with Motivational Mondays are engaged with our students and your students and our youth to make sure that they can be very resourceful. The next series of speakers we're going to have come in is public health. We're going to have nutrition services that are coming in from public health to talk about preparation and meals or what have you, uh, healthy eating, diets, so forth. And so this is what's happening as a result of public-private relationships that Project Fighting Chance has entered into. We're also going to make this a very significant news with UCR and their agricultural department in terms of the impact that natural environments has on youth and children of color and underserved populations and their outdoor environment and how nature has a positive impact on their academic performance. Thank you on behalf of Project Fighting Chance, and I will look forward to you all coming to see the Tranquility Garden at Project Fighting Chance. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the invitation again.
Not a problem.
Okay, um, our next speaker is Carol Husband. Ms. Husband, if you're available, please unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm a parent and I want to talk about opening schools. It is my impression that there is no chance for us to open schools this year, even for small groups, and I believe this is a missed opportunity. I appreciate the in-person summer classes being offered and see this as a way for kids to get have a chance to get back some of what they've missed academically and a chance to be introduced to potentially what the next year will look like. But my concerns are now focused on next fall. I've heard from many people that schools will be open in hybrid, that the then they'll be progressing to fully open. And I've also heard from parents and teachers saying that schools will be fully open. My question is in the terms of fully too. Um, how does fully mean? Does it mean that my children will be in a classroom five days a week for the entire day? After watching past board meetings and presentations and even this meeting, it doesn't potentially seem so. I continually need to hear different scenarios, even watching board meetings for the past year air. I have not, I'm not so clear on plans. I believe this confusion is directly due to the lack of information from the district to the parents. It just, I just heard about the town hall meeting scheduled at the end of the month. And I hope that this will provide concrete information to our parents about in-person learning. I continue to collect signatures from parents wanting their kids back in the classroom, but I have limited ability to reach all parents in our school district. The district itself has the ability to reach out to all parents better than one person. I ask that you use this ability to reach out to parents, gather input from them and give them information so parents can make an informed decision. The last time I believe the district reached out to parents to get input was at the end of twenty twenty. There's been much change in the last few years. And if the district doesn't feel that they need to have input from teach from parents in the coming year, then they need to provide parents with more information on what's going to happen. I understand that there are many factors to opening schools. But I have real concern when in all these factors are lined up and our kids should be back into the classroom fully, five days a week, all day, that we will again be sidelined. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, um, our next public speaker is Jean. Jean, if you're available, please unmute. I was just told she's not here, so I'll move on to Bryant Vargas. Mr. Vargas, if you're available, can you please unmute?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Uh, I'm here as part of um, a student-led, uh, community advocacy project at California State University San Bernardino. Um, our team name is Celebrating Diversity. Uh, and I am here, Bryant Vargas, with my team members Dolores Medina and Yasmin Gonzalez. Um, we're here speaking as a group. Uh, we most likely will not need the allotted thirty minutes to speak. Um, and if possible, Ms. Cunningham, I'd actually like to let Yasmin take charge first.
Okay, if she's available?
She should be.
Good evening. First and foremost, uh, thank you all for your time. My name is Yasmin Gonzalez and I represent Team Diversity. As Bryant mentioned, a diverse group of six social work juniors enrolled at California State University of San Bernardino um, in about in the bachelor's, um, social work program. Uh, we are currently in the midst of our community advocacy project. Two of my team members, Dolores and Bryant, are here with me today. In addition, um, another team member actually works as an instructional assistant at Indian Springs High School. We have chosen to focus our efforts on San Bernardino and specifically, um, San Bernardino's Unified School District students and their families. We are reaching out to try to gather information regarding issues surrounding COVID and distant learning within the district, specifically how it is impacting students, such as language barriers, lack of technology, um, their mental health, et cetera. The COVID-nineteen pandemic has brought child and adult poverty to the forefront of national conversations. An unprecedented amount of funding at both federal and local levels has been mobilized to confront the exploration of issues related to poverty. But we are yet to see an authentic effort to tackle poverty nationwide from a policy standpoint. During this distant-based school year, the undergraduate social work program at CSUSB has decided to continue its tradition of ex- of expecting students to engage in a community advocacy project. My team chose to advocate for a small residential community near downtown San Bernardino. And what we found was that Americans weighed down by the effects of poverty compounded by a life-alternative public health crisis. My team resonates with the Board of Education's resolution of the Board of Education's commitment to the education of all children and making all campuses a safe zone for students and families. And the other effort that, um, this school district has made to address issues of inequality and parity, we have identified three areas of friction that we hope to engage with during this project. Multilingualism, digital literacy, and COVID-nineteen public health awareness. Um, I would also like to state to Mr. Tillman, Dr. Flores, and Ms. Medina, thank you for the questions and concerns you brought up earlier. As a parent of two under the age of seven, it is concerning, um, for me to send my children for an in-person learning environment. Um, with that being stated, moving forward, um, if possible, I would like to ask my team member Bryant to go into further detail.
Thank you, Yasmin, and thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I want to go ahead and bank, reiterate the thanks to Mr. Tillman for your pointed questions, advocating for classified staff and at-risk constituents, and Dr. Flores for asking for concrete uh, information in lieu of projections. And I want to actually reinforce some of that concrete information. So we know, uh, per the resolution of the Board of Education's commitment to the education of all children and making all campuses a safe zone for students, that seventy-four point nine percent of students in San Bernardino City Unified are Latino or Latin of Latina descent. Uh, twelve percent are African-American, six point three percent are white. Um, eighty-five point eight percent of students qualify for free and reduced lunch. 85.8% of students qualify for free and reduced lunch. We know that over 30 different languages are spoken in San Bernardino City Unified School District. Not just including English and Spanish, right, but Vietnamese, Cambodian, Filipino. The reality is that this is an extremely diverse and multicultural, multiracial district. And when we look at the impact of COVID-19, it is not. You know, average, it is not general, it has been targeting our people of color. So when we look at inland empire and we see that our Hispanic and our Latino residents. Overrepresent an essential worker and frontline worker positions, we know that they were hit hardest during the layoffs. And unemployment, we know that the rates on average according to the CDC are 2.3 higher. Times more like your 2.3 times more likely to die than a non-Hispanic as a Hispanic person. From COVID-19. And the craziest part of this is that we know that in inland empire, three out of 10. Residents are immigrants, Latino immigrants. And when we look at the rates for Latino immigrants, according to the CDC. Latino immigrants are 11 times higher among working or the the rates of death are 11 times higher among working age Latino immigrants. According to a USC study. So we know that COVID-19 has been affecting our people of color, our students of color, our families of color. In San Bernardino more than it has anyone else. And the reality is that we need to make sure that our response is targeted. And it is focused on these at-risk groups. So I want to quickly shift to some general statistics when we look at poverty in the US. So over 140 million Americans are considered poor or one emergency from being poor. According to the official poverty measure as of 2019, 34 million Americans, 11 million of which are children, are living in poverty. We know that one in four black and one in four Hispanic or Indian slash Alaskan native children were considered poor compared to one in 12 white children. We know that one in seven children live in poverty and more than 4.5 million of these children live in extreme poverty. At less than half the poverty level. So the reality when we confront these statistics is that on the national level. In order to affect these local issues that San Bernardino is experiencing, we must have a national effort. So as a team, we have decided to lobby for House Resolution 67. Which hopes to address on a national level, some of these issues that we have brought to light. And I will mention right away that House Resolution 67 has only just been introduced. It has been referred. To the Committee of House Oversight and Reform. And it itself does not actually allocate funding for anything. What it does is instead prioritize and recommend that many of these issues I have spoken. Of are addressed and some of the recommendations it gives are the following. Increase wages for working families, improve tax credits to ensure more low-income children and families benefit. Boost nutrition and housing assistance, expand subsidized jobs with special attention to the needs of young adults. Disconnected from school and work and provide access to reliable childcare. Increase funding for as well as broaden inclusivity of and strengthen basic need programs like supplemental nutrition assistance program. TANF, the child tax credit, the earned income tax credit and housing assistance, especially during this pandemic. We all know that these programs are used widely by many of our students of color and our families of color in the district. So we call on you as power brokers, as people in positions of power, please help us advocate for these. Children and these families and I will now pass it on to Dolores. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dolores Medina. To tie up this presentation, it is important to be aware of the benefits of HRS 67. Because it is, it can be the first step into initiating a bill that will help relieve child and family poverty. As mentioned before, the HRS 67 does not create programs or direct funds. To address poverty, but it has potential to open that door to creating a bill specifically for funding. The children are our future, so we must do the best we can to give them a bright future. As mentioned before. Nutrition, nutrition is one of the leading signs of poverty. But with the school lunch programs, children will be able to fill that specific need during school hours. Some students unfortunately are not able to gain access to new materials for school. So without materials, they're unable to fully develop themselves into school. But because of COVID-19, it is hard to know which child is in need. Since we are getting closer to returning children into their schools, we'll start noticing a little bit more of who needs supplies and materials. A way, a way we can help is recently we opened up an Instagram account for the community of San Bernardino. Or anyone else that is interested in this bill or helping our communities. Follow, they can follow and keep themselves updated and see the progress we have made. Also, the community can assist us with spreading news about HRS 67 in order to pass into Congress. The community can also help one another by socializing in school events. Unfortunately, it's through Zoom now. And exchanging contacts. Teachers can have open communication with their students so they can have better understanding on how to help. And possibly introduce families to programs that are available. And this is the end of our, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Quick question, did, did you mention your Instagram account page name?
I did not, but I can write it down or one of my team members can write it down on the chat box if we're able to do that, if it's open for that.
Sure, but I would like to personally have it if, if we can't display it here, if you can just email it to me, I would.
Of course.
You can provide it to the district and then they can forward it out to all of us.
Awesome. One of them have it, has it at hand. Give me one second. Wondering if Bryant or Yasmin is on here.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I was going to say Dolores, we're muted. Yes, give me, give me one second. Could we actually get an email address to send you the Instagram so you could forward that?
We'll send you out an email to send it to us, Brian.
Oh my goodness, thank you so much.
So I can just verbally real quick, it's celebrating diversity, social work students. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was writing that down. Okay, our next speaker is, I don't have an actual name, it just says Rodriguez Prep Parent. If you're available, please unmute. Oh, I'm just told she, they're not here, alright. And I'll go to Anthony Leonardi. Dr. Leonardi, if you could please unmute.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll just, my name is Anthony Leonardi. I'm a T-cell immunologist educated at Johns Hopkins in 2009, 2012. And I did my PhD work at the National Cancer Institute on T-cell function dysfunction and immunity. I discovered the dominant linked mechanism for T-cell differentiation and death. I'm currently a medical student. I have important news to share with you. The novel coronavirus is now recognized as airborne by the scientific community. After a close review of transmission and contacts and situations. The evidence was overwhelming. The virus also etches its imprint. On the immune systems of uninfected people who are in contact with infected people. The worrisome thing is that, is that these people who had the immunological imprint did not have antibodies. Meaning they were still liable to get infected because the antibodies are the best indicator of protection from reinfection. Restrooms are not safe from the airborne virus. The virus is spread inside the restrooms, urinals and toilets and people have been infected just by taking off their masks. In restrooms. Every student will likely use the restroom in a day, it is ripe for super-spreading events. Since the virus is airborne, ventilation is the most important thing rather than barriers, as barriers can increase infection instead. Schools that cannot keep windows and doors open are not safe. Air filtration systems are still a science that is being developed for this and are not proven. It is not ethical to experiment on the youth as to what may or may not work before it is scientifically ascertained. We are not safe from infection until our community is vaccinated for herd immunity. Infection-based immunity is not good enough, it is less immunity than the vaccine because the virus warps the immune response. Experts thought India had reached herd immunity because they had population, occupational immunity. If you recall in my previous letters, I said that the virus would warp the immune response with infection. And that vaccines would be superior, I was now proven right. Now a variant in India has emerged that partially escapes immunity from infection. And has in fact just appeared in California. Is currently causing a huge wave in India and is referred to as the Indian double mutant. Currently only around 20% of San Bernardino adults are vaccinated. This is not enough protection for herd immunity effect. Toronto has attempted to open recently with these variants present and they are now shutting down in-person classes. Almost right away due to the P1 variant. This variant was also found in San Bernardino. Recently, many schools have opened in USA and have driven infections, especially in Minnesota and Michigan recently. I highly recommend the board consider that a premature opening with these variants present will drive cases higher because of, because of their aggressive nature. We did not wait to come this far with a vaccine, just open once some adults are safe, but not the children. Also, the B117 variant from Britain is likely to infect children more easily, does infect more easily. The neurological effects of this virus concern me the most in regard to children. The virus has been observed to cause early markers of Parkinson's in monkeys called Lewy bodies. The human age equivalent of these monkeys was 14 years. The virus is also causing a pattern of immune inflammation similar to that seen in Epstein-Barr viruses. Association with multiple sclerosis. Scientists have found the virus may be able to create autoimmunity in people. More information is revealed every day about COVID-19 and is very concerning as it is leading to chronic issues in children known as long COVID. It affects 13% of children under 11 who are infected. Many doctors are concerned that there may be long-lasting disability from this virus. Many of the people who are inpatients need readmission to the hospital after being discharged. A study found 33% of COVID-19 patients needed readmission within four months. Inpatients had a 10% chance of dying within an average of 140 days after discharge. Looking at 250,000 survivors of COVID-19, 33% of them had a neurological or psychiatric diagnosis within six months of infection. Please consider that we are close to vaccinations for children. Unvaccinated students with indoor classrooms face risk of chronic illness and death. And once infected will drive transmission in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Leonardi a question?
Yeah, of course.
Ms. Leonardi, do you have any contact or with the CDC?
I don't have contact with the CDC.
Or your colleagues?
No, my ex-colleagues are NIH, but I talked to some of the, a lot of the aerosol scientists that. That recognize that it's airborne now, but you know, they published.
Because my, my only question is, you know, we're, we're, our district is an outlier because we haven't gone back to school this year. But if you listen to the CDC, the lady who's in charge now. She emphasizes that it's safe to go back to school. So you're saying if you had a conversation with her, you would disagree with her?
Yeah, so here's the thing, I disagree with her because she's not looking at the long-term effects of the virus because obviously we haven't seen them, right? So, I mean, they'll say, well, the children don't, don't die like the adults do. First of all, that's changing with the variants, they're getting more aggressive on young people. And then second of all, where, where are the studies, you know, right now in one in mice and then two in monkeys. They see the animals getting changes that are like Alzheimer's and Parkinson's. Okay, they don't, I mean, we don't know, we don't know in humans yet, hasn't been long enough.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, Dr. Leonardi, thank you for. For your. Medical and cautionary data and so forth. My question deals with. You said, you said that there's children immunization imminent. Can you tell us more about that?
Yeah, of course. So they're using the best vaccines right now, testing them on kids. And that's the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. And the kids have even less side effects than the adults so far and have even better responses.
What ages are those, Dr. Leonardi?
I think I saw. I think I saw around like eight or six, you know, definitely grade school. And here's the thing, so Israel, they ended up vaccinating about 60% of all their people so far. And they no longer have the COVID going around their communities. So. If, if everybody in the community is able to get their numbers up to around 60, see Fauci said 70%. I'm going to go off on a limb and say something around 65, you know? And I think that you guys will be able to enter schools without it being passed around. So whichever.
This also includes children and.
Yeah, when you count everybody, yeah, count everybody for 65%, 70%, yeah.
Do you know when they are going to allow children to be vaccinated in the United States?
That's likely going to be, I think, two months.
In two months, okay.
Two or three months, yeah. So, and then you guys have to watch your numbers in the community because right now you guys are pretty low at 20%.
So vaccinated, you mean?
Yeah.
Can you speak about the ventilation system? And that's my last question, Madam President.
Yeah, because we want to make sure we're asking him clarifying questions. Because we also want our, our public to know that as this is a public comment, we do have our internal, you know.
Right, right. I wanted to ask him, he mentioned about ventilation, so I'd like to clarify. What he deems as.
Ventilation.
Ventilation and what's authentic and preventative ventilation.
Okay, if we can, Dr. Leonardi.
That's my last, that's my last question.
Thank you.
Okay. So effective ventilation, I think it was down to five micrometers. I'd have to send you guys the technical information. It's very difficult to do, okay, there was, there was actually a huge pushback. Against recognizing the virus as airborne because of what it would require. For businesses and hospitals to change just by acknowledging the truth. So. I can send you some of the literature, what I recall it's five micrometers. It's very difficult to update, how are we going to do it in the bathrooms? I'm not sure because that's where, you know, there's a lot of virus in there. In the bathrooms and toilets and stuff, so it's going to be a hurdle and until, I mean. Until most people are vaccinated, it would be, it would be quite difficult to update this, but I will send you the technical information.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Karen?
Yes, and our last speaker is Valerie Leonardi, if you will please unmute.
I wanted to take the opportunity to thank San Bernardino City Unified School District once more. For holding students and family and community members' safety as the main. Focus of what needs to happen. Children who are dealing with. Illness, children who are dealing with deaths in their families. I'm very grateful that we hold, that our, hold children's best interest at heart. I also would like to mention that the letter that AJ just read is cited, there were over, I believe. Went, I, I could be wrong because I can't see it right here offhand. But I believe there were a minimum 25 scientific journals accepted, peer-reviewed citations with links discussing airborne illnesses. And the studies that AJ has. Reference to when he drafted that letter. And thank you once more and I'm also going to forward on the letter to everyone in the district administration as well as the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Cunningham, did you say that that was the last comment?
Yes, it was.
All right, thank you so much. We're now going to move to a point of reports and comments by union organization. 8.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, Dr. Rogers. President, President Dr. Rogers, I'm not sure which one comes first. Congratulations on your new title. Good evening to Dr. Volkmer, Vice President Dr. Wyatt, other members. Vice President Dr. Wyatt, other members of esteemed members of the board and cabinet, I'm Ashley Vita Salcola. President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the three thousand members of SBTA. Just this week, the COVID case numbers within San Bernardino County saw an increase for the first time in several weeks. Also of note today, the state released their updated numbers. And they also saw an increase statewide. San Bernardino County continues to be in the orange tier, as you heard Mr. Betier state earlier in the presentation on resuming services. And in looking at our local numbers. The current case rates within our school district went up this week to four point one per four per one hundred thousand. And also, the case rate for the city has slightly increased to four point seven cases per hundred thousand. As much as we would like to believe that things are moving in the right direction, as many adults are getting vaccinated. We are still nowhere near the end of this global pandemic. Nationwide cases have risen by eight percent in the past two weeks. And several states are now emerging as hotspots with increases of ten percent. In new coronavirus cases where COVID restrictions have been relaxed. And in our own school district. Boundaries, the number of children aged five to nineteen. Testing positive with COVID has increased again by another sixty four cases. To five thousand four hundred and seventy five cumulative cases since the pandemic began. At this time, we still do not know how soon COVID vaccines will be approved for children under the age of sixteen. This is extremely concerning. Based on what we are learning about the new variants that have emerged that appear to be much more contagious and target children at higher rates. As we begin to plan for in-person learning, we cannot forget that our children are still not protected from this virus. Even as sixteen and up are eligible now across California and the United States to get vaccinated. We also don't know the percentage of our community that is vaccinated, which we know is already. Has many struggles to get access to quality healthcare and coverage as well as preventative healthcare. We must continue to take every safety precaution seriously. Masking for students and staff, improved ventilation through upgraded air filters and air purifier units within our. Classrooms and offices. And distancing in order to ensure that these environments that we bring students back to are safe. And as I have said before, we need to continue to proceed with caution. And if we need to stop and change course to encourage everyone's safety. Then we need to have the courage to do that as this board has done since the beginning of the pandemic. We also have yet to begin negotiations with the district for returning to in-person learning with students. Our first meeting is scheduled for next week. And we anticipate that we will have many rich discussions about the implementation of these safety procedures as we continue to move forward. And as we plan and negotiate. With the district, our focus needs to continue to be on the three priorities I mentioned last time. Implementation of safety protocols, procedures, logistics and implementation. Social emotional supports specifically for our staff. And our core instructional program. These three priorities. I see as a three legged stool, and if one of them is removed, that stool will not be able to stand. They have, they are all interconnected. And we also cannot afford to cut corners just to return to normal. If we do not implement COVID safety procedures based on current scientific knowledge and guidance. Then we will be in danger of putting our children and their families at risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we are at eight point two California School Employees Association. Is there a representative?
Yes, I am here.
Hello.
Hi, good evening, Madam President Rogers, Board members and Cabinet. My name is Juanita Upshaw, the chapter treasurer for CSEA San Bernardino Chapter one eighty three. I have come to you on behalf of two thousand members. CSEA negotiates with the district on behalf of the classified employees in good faith. At times, it takes months for us to reach an agreement. We all signed the agreement confirming both parties understand and agree to the terms. Hence the term memorandum of understanding. Therefore, it is not acceptable after signing a contract or even an MOU. Something in which both teams agreed upon for it not to be adhered to. For example, we bargained in good faith in a recent reopen our contract or bargaining agreement. With the district regarding our return to work and the safety of the classified employees. There is new language regarding protective footwear that the district agreed to provide for the classified employees who work under hazardous conditions. The district refuses to adhere to the MOU as to safety footwear for our CSOs, which are our campus security officers. The district stated that their classification was not specifically mentioned in the MOU. So therefore, we are currently going through grievance process and will be requesting mediation with the district. We want to make you aware of the concerns such as these because we all know and agree. And can agree on that safety is of the utmost utmost importance for all employees and students. And I want to especially thank Dr. Flores and Mr. Tillman for their comments and support tonight regarding the importance and safety. And the needs of the classified employees who are working on the front lines and who are the backbone of the district. So as we discuss the return to work back to the sites, CSEA urges you to please acknowledge and adhere to the agreement. That both parties parties have bargained for in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to eight point three, Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative on tonight?
Uh, yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, honorable members of the board and SBC USD staff. Uh, first of all, thank you for um memorializing. Uh, along with the the guest teachers, uh, one of our uh, previous guest teachers, the previous AVP for CWA nine five eight eight. Who uh, passed on on April the ninth. And Stephen Gianni was uh, with the district for quite some time. And so uh, he was the one that helped to uh, set uh, things up for us here. And again, we thank you for uh, along with us memorializing him. Uh, we look forward to uh, moving ahead and and in a very safe way. Uh, with the district to uh, getting our guest teachers back to work. Uh, we we recognize that uh, this uh, virus is still. Uh, an enemy that is that is very uh, strong and that is. Uh, we've got a lot to do to uh, continue to be uh, just. Uh, staying with what we're doing right now, which is wearing our masks and washing and all of those things. But we also look forward to uh, getting back and getting our our young people back in uh, in the classroom. Uh, because there are so many students, uh, students that we have also talked to, many of whom. Uh, chose not to participate in the the any of the virtual learning. And consequently, um. Many of these students will require, you know, the summer school, which uh, we're we're heartened to hear that. SBC USD is looking to move in the direction of having summer school and and uh, offering that opportunity for for students to come back. So uh, we look forward to doing that and in a very safe way. We're also watching all the signs of of where this um. This disease is going. And um, again, we're we're looking forward to to what moving ahead. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, eight point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there a representative tonight? No, doesn't sound like it. Okay, if not. I'm going to go ahead and move to nine point oh presentation, nine point one, Student Achievement Update, Dr. Volkmer.
Thank you, uh, Doctor President Doughty Rogers.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, board tonight, we're going to bring you an update on our accelerated student achievement plan or ASAP. Uh, as we continue to hear more and more about the state's position in relation to COVID. And the governor's recent proclamation that if certain conditions are met, we will open to reopen this state for full operation on June fifteenth. This is guiding our planning uh, as to how we're moving forward uh, for both the summer and for the twenty one twenty two school year. And with that as a backdrop, I sent a letter to our families this week to reassure them that it is our hope and intent. To open school full time, five days a week in twenty twenty one twenty two. That's absolutely what we would love to do. We'd love to all be back together, our kids there. We know it's not going to be the option that all of our families choose. Given their own circumstances and their own preferences, but we do want to be able to offer that. This, of course, counts on case rates remaining low and the acumen of the conditions in the governor's declaration. And so to give you. An update on our progress, uh, Dr. Manares and Mrs. Applegate are with us this evening. I want to thank them and their teams for taking a very deliberate and thoughtful approach to this very, very heavy lift. This is very, it it continues to be very complex. It continues to be uh, very intense. And I want to thank them for really being in tune with our theme of preparing for excellence, of being ready for anything. So I'll turn it over to Rachel and Anna at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. If we can bring the presentation up. While that's coming up, I too want to um, congratulate Dr. Doughty Rogers for your accomplishment. I know um, how. I I that you will, there will come a time where you will realize, wow, what was, how did I make that happen? And what am I doing with all this free time now? And. I don't seem to have any free time anymore. So um, congratulations. We know it takes. Yes, absolutely. Um, so to that point, um. Just want to say good evening to our board president, vice president, board members, um, cabinet, community members. Tonight you will hear um. The update on our various plans that we have going for acceleration of learning. Um, and we're going to actually start with what we would like to recommend in terms of next school year. So I hope. That the parent that was on um, Carol husband is still listening and that we will meet her expectation. Uh, to give her some information as well as everyone else. So next slide, please. Right, so board quickly, the recap of April sixth, two key um, outcomes on the April sixth meeting. You heard and you approved the outdoor in-person graduation ceremonies. We're very excited to be offering that for the graduating class of. Um, twenty of the twenty twenty one school year. Those ceremonies, the majority of them will take place at Glen Helen Pavilion for our larger high schools and our smaller high schools. Um, we will be hosting those um, at the uh, Sixty Sixer Stadium. We are still working on um. Figuring out and 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 adhering to the promise that we made to the class of twenty twenty and what that graduation will look like. So more to come on that. You also heard the presentation regarding three key performance indicators. Graduation rates, A through G rates and college and career indicator. While the graduation rates and the CCI, the college and career indicator experienced a decline, the district's A through G rate um, increased modestly. Next slide. So tonight, board, three objectives. First one is to share the recommendations for the twenty one twenty two school year opening. Then we will go into the learning acceleration plan and the supports that all students will receive. From summer through next school year and then the above and beyond additional supports that um. Student groups will also receive and those identified groups. Um, and again, what they would get summer and into next school year. So. Um, what I'll get and then above and beyond for identified groups. Next slide. So these reopening guiding principles have not changed. They continue to be. Our guide and working and preparing for offering any in in-person work experience or learning. Um, opportunity for our students. First and foremost, we still are committed to ensuring health and physical safety of our students and staff. While we follow the ever changing guidance from the federal, state and county. And most specifically, it's our state and county, the federal, which would be our um, the CDC, the Center for Disease Control. Um, informs state decisions and then it's the California Department of Public Health. That then adopts what comes from the Center of Disease Control at the federal level and then that trickles down to the county. So we follow that um, regularly, making sure that we can um, implement what is happening and and almost read the tea leaves of what we think is going to happen. Um, because we we're such a large district, we want, we need to be able to pivot on a dime. Um, but we can't necessarily always pivot on a dime. So we're really tracking that. In addition, and always providing high quality learning experiences, whether that's in distance learning or. Um, when we can return to in person and then finally, safe and accessible working conditions. So these have not changed. Want to keep those um, forefront in your mind as um, I go through the rest of the slides and our recommendation for what the twenty one twenty two school year. Um, should look like. Next slide, please. So we are prepared for excellence and ready for anything, right? We shared this, I think, two board meetings ago. And it's the idea of we are cultivating different learning experiences for our students. So we're still in April and June. And we're still in distance learning. You'll hear from Ms. Applegate tonight and um, other team members, what we're planning for the summer. And from me, most specifically, you're going to hear about the school year twenty one twenty two. And a little bit about that virtual academy that we would like to offer. So the next slide. So based off of what we're hearing from the California Department of Public Health. What they're saying, and you can see the quote that was taken directly from what they sent out on April fourteenth, so very new. They're saying if current trends and best practices continue, and those best practices are the safety measures. I will reiterate those in the next slide. If those continue, the next school year can begin with offering full in-person instruction to all students. Full means full days and five days a week. We, they also recognize and we are in complete agreement that some staff. And some students and family may continue to require accommodations, meaning accommodations for our staff because of um, some potential health. Needs or um, family situations and then options for our families with their children, right? So what we would like to propose is that for the twenty one twenty two school year, not summer, twenty one twenty two school year. That if our our rates continue as they are and the guidance continues as it is from the California Department of Public Health. That we open in an in-person setting. And we have a virtual academy for those families who want that account, that option. And before you ask Mr. Tillman, I want to be very clear, the same, it it will not be like it is this year. So the educator will either be teaching in in person. Or they will teach virtual, they will not do both. Um, so we would work with our unions and negotiate the impacts on all of this, but we wanted to bring this to you as the board first. And make sure that you're good with it and then we're going to move through the process. So next slide, please. So these are the safety measures that um, that is referenced from the California Department of Public Health and and you've heard them already and we've discussed them, right? It is um, the wearing of masks, so the universal usage of masks. You have that in your board mitigation policy already. You have board policy around that. You also have in your board policy regarding masks usage, accommodations for students who are special needs. And or um, employees that may work with um, high need students and to protect them. That's already in your board policy board. So we would be. Enacting that, but the this idea of wearing masks. We would expect everybody to do that. We would also expect the frequent hand washing or hand sanitizing. We are still bringing in the portable sink so that we have more hand washing locations for. Um, our students and our staff and we will have the hands on it, hand sanitizing throughout the schools as well as our departments. And then the physical distancing. So we're anticipating for the guidance from the state on this as of now, currently today at this very moment. The physical distancing guidance says students have to be three feet away from each other and the educator has to be um, six feet from the student. We are looking at our classrooms to um, to see how many students we can fit in there. In our K three for most of our classrooms, we believe we can do that, but. Still, we're we're analyzing all of that and if we need to, then we negotiate the impact on that. Um, we also believe that there's going to be further guidance from the state that we um, anticipate hearing as part of the governor's uh, revise. So more to come on that. But these are the safety measures that the California Department of Health is saying have these in place as well as continue with um. The vaccinations, monitoring the amount of vaccinations. Um, you know that we cannot as a district require vaccinations um, from our families nor our employees. That would be something that would have to come at the state level and that very well may happen as part of the um, legislative process, but as of now, this is what we know. Next slide. So coming back to our instructional models, again, just to give a different visual, what we are recommending for the 2122 school year is that we open in phase four. Phase four is what we know how to do with school now. And offer a virtual option for any family who does not feel comfortable sending their child back. This is not about judgment. This is about what a family feels comfortable with, their level of risk tolerance, and have accommodations for our employees as well. Now, do want to put a caveat in there. The classroom instruction will be very much like what we know. Although we're not going to allow children, they can't, the small grouping, they're going to have to keep the distancing that. However, recesses, transition periods, passing periods, entering school, exiting school, that will look different. And so we will be working with our school principals and have them work with their school teams and then get input from their families so that every school can develop a plan that is contextualized, that makes sense for their particular school. Because we will have some things that will come from the district level, but much of it will have to be specific to the school. And we will work with our principals and their teams, actually starting next week on that. Next slide, please. So here, so you may be asking, and this is true, we have not done mass communication on this yet because we wanted to bring it to you first. So there's kind of this chicken and the egg, right, in terms of the communication? We don't, if we communicate possibilities sometimes with our, our employees, it gets translated into we're doing it, but we haven't brought it to you yet. So we're trying to figure out what's the best way to do this communication. By no means are we perfect at it. And I'm sure there's some principals out there that are very frustrated at this very moment. So we're going to keep keeping people informed. But we're bringing this to you tonight. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with our management team in the morning. And then we have weekly meetings now, every Wednesday morning to talk about and give them updates and train as necessary for 2122 school year. So tomorrow, our principals and our managers and our assistant principals will hear about this in more detail. Then our employee groups, and we're working with SBT A right now, will continue to work with CSEA. But we will get a written communication about the 2122 school year out to everybody, including all of the safety measures that we'll have in place and trying to anticipate questions they will have. We'll get that out to them by April 26th, which would be next Monday. We're going to try to do it before that, but that's our final date. And then we'll have frequent emails going out and updating them. And then finally, for our families, we, we do have a town hall scheduled for April 26th. Now that town hall is, the topic is going to be specifically about safety measures. We're going to stay, we're just going to stay in the safety world first. We're going to talk just about the safety measures. We've got a video. We're going to have, we're going to try to make it as visual as possible. Then on May 10th, that's when we'll get into the more of the academic instructional side of the house. We'll talk about the virtual academy and, and then again, what these routines and transitions, what they should be expecting from their schools. So if you've heard from people saying, we don't know what's going on, we wanted to bring it to you first. And then this is our plan in terms of communication. We have one more piece of communication that I want to talk about, and that starts with the next slide. So our, our incoming superintendent, Mr. Irvin, has asked us to develop a roadmap to reopening. And so our roadmap has some goals for it. And, and then this is where the task force that you had asked about, Ms. Rosales Medina, will be a part of. So next slide about this roadmap. So why are we creating a roadmap? So there's three reasons why. We want to make sure that we have shared language and understanding of all of the components that are necessary for offering a return to in-person learning for next school year. So whether that's safety information, whether that's what the virtual academy will look like, that parents are asking about protocols for visitors, that kind of stuff, that will all be in there. We want to provide a concrete compiled document for our stakeholders to reference during the 2122 school year. And then finally, we want to make sure that this information is equitable and, and everybody can access it. So we will have it both in English and in Spanish. We will have it on our website. Because what we don't want is parents or anybody. So these stakeholders are our parents, our classified staff, our certificated staff, anybody and everybody who makes up the family of SBCUSD. We don't want people relying on, because they know somebody, that they get information. We want people to have access to the same information. And so this roadmap will do that. It will be very lengthy. And so we'll work with communications to make it as user-friendly as possible. But that's the, the why behind the roadmap. Next slide, I'll get to the goals of the roadmap. So there's three goals. First one is to ensure a smooth transition to offering in-person learning experiences. You know, it's been said, we're, we're a very large organization and we've been sitting, you know, the, the buildings themselves, not the people, everyone's been working, no question. But the buildings have been sitting. And so we've got to get things moving, right? And so we're going to need some, I, I keep saying, we need a lot of WD-40 to get this, this train back on track. And so we want it to be smooth for when our scholars come back on campus as well as our employees. So the roadmap helps with that. It will define the academic and social emotional framework and supports for the acceleration of learning. And it will capture the, the key details around the virtual academy option. And I do want to share that so much of this work has already been done. It's really about a matter of compiling it all into one document that is user-friendly. That's because we've been doing this work. So it's not like we're starting new. We're just going to get it all together into a user-friendly document. Lot, next slide, please. And so the last part of the roadmap is we've got some guiding principles. So we met with our team today, our team of close to 100 people. You know, it's all our directors and, you know, the people who are really doing the in and out of the work. And we said, so these are the principles of the roadmap. And so everything that we do should plug back into these principles. First and foremost, we are an organization that exists for students. So that our work has to be student-centered. We have to be sure that we have mental and physical wellness as, as this, as part of the, the, the linchpin of the roadmap. And that's for our students, our families, and our staff. Because we know that this has been a challenging time for everybody. We have to be sure that we are thinking in terms of equity and inclusion. So making sure that people have access and that we're thinking of the various entities or groups that make up San Bernardino City. This idea of excellence in action, that everything we do is at our highest level of excellence and that we are, that we, we work to serve. We have to be sure that we have high-quality learning, and we heard that from our SBT A president as well. And then finally, of course, we have to make sure that our facilities are safe, they're COVID-safe, right? So these themes will run through the roadmap. We will look at it through that lens. All of these lens to make sure that we're doing that. And so then, while the roadmap is being developed, then I will be bringing to get, seeking and finding people for this task force. And so the task force, the, the purpose of the task force will be to take the draft roadmap. So the task force isn't making the roadmap. The task force will take the draft of the roadmap and they will review it. And they'll give input and let us know if we're missing anything, if we need to clear, better clarify. Because on the task force, we will have parents and those parents will come from our advisory teams. We will have, of course, our union representation, representatives. We will have principals. We will have some high school students and they will come from our student advisory. Of course, we will have our cabinet members and identified directors. And then finally, we would like to board members to also be a part of this task force. We, for certain, would meet at least one time to review the roadmap. We might need to meet another time. We aren't going to review it until Mr. Irvin comes on board full-time with us. So we're looking at the date to review it to be by June 23rd. But you can rest assured, we're already working on all of this right now. We cannot wait until June. That's just when the final document will be compiled. And I think that's, I'm done on my part.
And so I'll stop there before we go to the accelerated student achievement plan because there's a couple of questions in the box, so we can cover this part. Dr. Flores?
Ah, yes. Dr. Menares, could you go back to the first slide of the, of the roadmap?
Yes, the, the why?
The very first one. No, and then the second one now?
One, yes. There, no, we're skipping one. Where is it? I know which one you're going to go. One back.
Yeah.
One more back.
One more back. So. No, the next one.
One more.
Just one more click. Another click. That's not the road, no, not going back, forward. Sorry.
That's okay. They're going the wrong way. There, stop. Oh, my goodness.
No, no, go one back.
Two back, actually. One more.
Right there. Okay, right there. Yes, thank you. So I, I was going to ask about the, the third bullet. To ensure equity and access to necessary information and knowledge for all SBCUSD stakeholders as we return to in-person learning and virtual academy option. I think you need to add that.
Okay.
And when we say, I think I heard you say equity and access, and we would have it in all our languages, right? Just not English, but Spanish, Vietnamese for our parents, correct?
Yes, I, the, the Vietnamese I did not mention, but yes, we will work on that.
So, and then the first bullet, provide shared language and understanding of all components necessary for offering return to in-person learning and virtual. I think you need to put virtual in there as well, in-person and virtual learning because that is going to be an option.
Yes.
That the parents don't get confused that, that is going to be available to them.
Got it.
So go to the next one. Move ahead one, okay. So. Ensure a smooth transition to offering in-person and virtual learning experiences. If that's what we're going to do. And, and then says, develop a virtual academy option K-12, the third one, right?
Correct.
So, and perhaps I would change one and two. That's just me because we are going to be looking at academic and social emotional framework and supports for acceleration of learning. But I mean, it doesn't matter, but I, I just think that it's more than just developing a, a virtual academy. We're going to offer a virtual academy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just looking at that. Go to the next one. And you should probably check the titles too, so that the titles go with it as the heading. And you did mention that, you know, of course, we're student-centered, but we also have to include everybody. We have to include our, our teachers, our classified, our, our, our parents, right? And of course, our students. So in the mental and physical wellness, families also included in equity inclusion, teachers as well. It, it applies to all of us. It's not just our students. Of course, I know what you're trying to say, that it's, we're going to focus on our students. But somehow, how do we encompass everyone that's going to be part of it? Do you know, do you see what I'm talking about? It's just something that, I don't know how to do it right now. I'm just posing it, you know, as, as, as a possibility, okay?
Yep. Most definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, that, those are my clarifying comments. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Rosales Medina?
I'm lost. Thank you for this update, Dr. Menares. This was really good. I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure which slide it's under, but it's the guiding principles. I think it's the next, is that the page? Nevermind, it's right there because I have it on the side. The draft on the bottom in yellow, it says draft roadmap to opening 2021, shared with task force by June. And so that is, for some reason, I feel it's really late for those that want to give input and so forth. But so that's, that's one of the dates that I don't know if it can be done sooner. I know we don't, we don't have much time. We're May is around the corner. But when you look at who will be part of the roadmap, I'm not sure if the slide, I think it's slide nine, where it says, next step for 2021 preparation, there's a management team. Is that part of the roadmap? Or I'm wondering who will be part of that roadmap?
So the, the development of the roadmap is actually currently happening, and that's all of our, our directors, right? So those are the people, well, let me, let me back up actually. So I want to remind the board that last spring and into the summer, we had a, a group that included teachers and principal. It was over 100 people that we had already pulled together when we were hoping to start this school year with some kind of in-person. And so we're using so much of what we already did with those individuals to, to put into this roadmap. We're not, we don't need to recreate it because they spent so much time on it. So they, there's been a lot of input that we've, we've received from our teachers of different groups, right? The, the, the actual compiling of the roadmap will be done by our directors and, and support staff. And then the review of that final roadmap will be by the task force, which will be a much smaller group. But we'll have it on the website and we can have people, we can create like a, kind of like what you do with the LCAP, right? We can post it on the website and let people know it's available for people to look at and, and then have a link to give us comments. That's not a problem.
Right, and I guess my concern was is that when you have directors, those that weren't necessarily, that were not in the classroom, virtual classrooms, that were not necessarily struggling in teaching. Now, they were working in other aspects. I think that's where we don't want to, we want to have their voices as part of this. I mean, want to have those that have been on the front line teaching versus those that were on the sidelines teaching, still helping, supporting, but weren't necessarily doing, doing the work itself. So I, I would, I wouldn't wait to have teachers give input until the task force. I would actually have their voices inputted within the, the roadmap. Like I said, you know, you want to have a balance. I think you're doing top-heavy when it comes to having directors who, like I said, have not been in the classroom, wasn't going through the struggle directly with students. So I want to make sure that we have those trees that were part of it. When we're heading back in the classroom, that they're at least able to maybe look at some of the issues that, that may arise. I know you did, you're right, you did do, the district did do reports and trying to get prepared when we were planning to open. I, I forgot when we were planning to open, but I know it was several months ago. And unfortunately, we decided not to, which is at the same time, a good decision because we know our students and our, on our staff, health is priority. But I just want to make sure that we're not forgetting those, that were in the classrooms, voices within the roadmap as, as something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, Ms. Medina, I want to clarify. So the, the development of the virtual academy, picture that as kind of like there's going to be a subgroup that, and that are already starting to work on that. Dr. Rodriguez is leading that work. And so that's where the sub, like the subgroup committee will include the teachers and that, and that they will feed that information into the roadmap.
Okay, that's good to clarify. Thank you so much for clarifying that piece. No, no, but that's good because then I'm able to better understand. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, so Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Menares, thank you so much for this wonderful, well-thought-out process here. I just want to make a comment. I don't, I don't have a clarifying question. But the one thing you said, and as a former principal, that I appreciate was empowering the principal and the teachers at the school to take a look at the culture of their school. Because as we know, all schools are different. And I think it's wonderful that they can take a look at their culture to make sure they fit into the big, big picture. So I just want to say thank you for empowering them to look at their own site. big picture, so I just want to say thank you for empowering them to look at their own sites, thank you so much.
You're welcome, Dr. Hill.
All right, uh, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, um, thank you for the report, uh, you, you, um, Dr. Monaris, you, you made a point to say that this is for the um, fall and not for the summer, is there a, a big piece in here that, I, I guess my question is, is the summer, uh, program, how many days is it gonna be for during the week?
Is, um, Ms. Applegate will talk about that, I wanna say it's about fifteen, no, twenty days, it's twenty days.
But how many days a week?
Um, Ms. Applegate, is it four days a week?
It, it is five days a week, we, we have the presentation next, and you'll get the details in there as well.
And then for the, for the virtual, uh, academy that we do moving forward, um, I don't know how, uh, how you guys are looking at selecting the teachers. Um, I, I do know that, uh, I've heard some great things about a lot of teachers, just a few things about, uh, some teachers didn't do as well with the virtual academy, so I wanna make sure that uh, we find a way to make sure we get the teachers in a virtual academy that have demonstrated success with, uh, the students, and we have plenty examples of it, I just wanna make sure it's not gonna be totally voluntary, and you have someone voluntary who, uh, they may think they're the best virtual teacher in the world, but if you have a lot of complaints, and, and you look at the numbers and the progress of the students, if it's not well, then I don't think that should be the matchup, I really think it's, it's critical, and we may even have to go recruit folks to be virtual that are on the fence, maybe don't wanna do it, but they're real good at it, and, and try to convince them to be the virtual teachers, cuz I, because I think, uh, especially in the beginning, it's critical to build a strong program, right? So as we move forward, I, I really think that if we can match up the, uh, the instructors that have demonstrated success uh, for virtual, that that's gonna happen, I don't know what, what your thought is, have you guys even thought about how you were gonna fill the slots for virtual versus the ones that come back to in-person?
Yeah, we will be working with our unions to, um, negotiate that process, I believe, uh, Doc, Dr. Funches, you correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I do believe we have to, we, that's part of the work.
You are correct, Rachel, Mr. Tillman, we do have a process that we worked through with, uh, SBTA on that, and it does include some of those processes that you spoke of, so we'll be working closely with SBTA on those processes, sir.
And, and just so I'm clear, we think we'll be able to ensure that the, the teachers who end up doing virtual teaching are ones who have demonstrated their success by doing it, right?
Part of the process is making sure that they have opportunity to, uh, go through the process for QR-ing and then things like that, so they'll have opportunity to apply, if you will.
And, and what does QR mean?
Qualifications review, so we have a process for that, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's the last of the question for that part, so we can start the other portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And good evening, once again, Bo, once again, board and cabinet, and to our viewers out there as well. So board, last board meeting, I had brought you a preview of the accelerated student achievement plan, or our ASAP plan, and, uh, tonight, we're gonna take a little bit more of an in-depth view, you'll be hearing from some of our department directors as well. We're gonna review exactly what the ASAP is, so we're gonna provide some clarity around that. I know board that in previous meetings, you have seen some of the supports that our school sites have implemented for our students, which we were extremely proud of, and we're yielding some results. And now we wanna see, we want to show you our district, um, approach to making sure that our students recapture any unfinished learning, so next slide, please. So board, we wanna review to make sure that there's a clear understanding by everybody of what we are talking about when we talk about our ASAP plan. So as you know, a couple of month, well, about a month ago, we had some legislation come down from the state through AB-86, and they were basically guidelines to make sure that districts were really doing right by their students, and that we were welcoming them with open arms and pre, providing all opportunities for them to be able to be successful, again, to recapture some of the learning and to accelerate that learning. We also want to highlight that this has been an inter-divisional collaborative approach. You will be hearing from directors, not only in my division at services, but you will be hearing, um, directors from Dr. Monatis's division, you'll be hearing from Dr. Rodriguez's division, so that you can see that it really is an all-hands-on-deck, as was said earlier. Once again, we're pivoting that big Titanic, and we're doing everything that we have to do to make sure that we do the best by our students and by our families as well. You'll see that we're gonna be providing some extended learning opportunities to increase student learning. We're going to also identify and focus on specific student groups that are in need of additional support, and really provide some high impactful strategies and target, um, our students that need that additional support in a very strategic way. We also would like to think that our ASAP plan encourages innovation and creativity. We really wanna think outside the box, we know now that when our kids come back and we, we welcome them with open arms, we wanna do everything possible, and we realize that our plan has to be flexible, because we don't know yet exactly what some of those needs might be as we come back. So as students come back, we wanna make sure that we are ready, and that, um, we are able to provide the support that is needed to accelerate their learning, next slide, please. So board, you've seen this template, this is actually just the template of the different components that were called out in AB-86, where we needed to either strengthen or improve our systems, or we're adding above and beyond and trying to be creative about, um, providing those supports for our students. As you know, we have a very strong base program, so we're not talking necessarily about our base program today. We're talking about those very high impact, above and beyond, things that we're gonna be doing for students, we have improved many of our tier-one systems, as you will see, but we are focusing on providing this additional support for our students to be able to provide more opportunities for them. Next slide. So the first component that we are going to be addressing, and it will be addressed by our director in Swiss Department, um, Ms. Colleen Williams, she will be the first one, and she will pass it off to the next directors, um, as appropriate for the different components, so Ms. Williams, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good evening, uh, Colleen Williams, the Director of Student Wellness and Support Services, pleasure to be with you all tonight, and, um, share some of the insights from the ASAP plan as well, thank you, um, Mrs. Applegate as well for the intro. Um, to highlight social emotional learning, looking at the stay-at-home orders and social distancing, we know have been difficult for families, students, and staff, um, particularly on mental health. So we are focused on SEO as it brings many benefits that you see there in those bubbles listed, from a decline in anxiety to improving interpersonal, social, emotional skills and academic performance.
Slide, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, I need to forward.
Oh. You're about to see the bubbles that I was talking about, apologies.
Can you please forward, I don't know if they're having technical difficulties.
Okay, there we go, wonderful, thank you so much, uh, team. Uh, so those, uh, bubbles there with the students are providing you with the research data around the benefits to social emotional learning. And so we talk about the fact that social emotional learning actually brings us that decline in anxiety, um, providing students with coping strategies, interpersonal skills, um, being improved, and even academic performance being improved. So as a result, um, the Student Wellness and Support Services, or as you know, we call ourselves Swiss, um, the Swiss Department is working on several different aspects of social emotional learning, and, um, addressing mental health needs of our staff and our students as well. So you'll see there in the bottom arrows, we have, um, district-wide SEL instruction, um, where we are purchasing a digital platform curriculum, um, or expanding our, our platform for second step, which is provided for kinder through eighth grade um, curriculum, and then School Connect for ninth through twelfth. Um, students attending summer school will also participate in daily social emotional learning activities and lessons, um, and they will be adjusted for, um, grade spans, so they are appropriate for for all students coming to, um, summer school. And then preparing our school counselors to provide small group instru-instruction, um, and intervention to support anxiety, depression, um, just the adjustments of coming back to school in the physical setting and really getting re-acclimated um, to the classroom setting, even with the new, um, requirements for safety, uh, developing those coping strategies in our students. Continuing to provide mental health therapy through our district heart team, um, and our partners at, um, our community partners like Victor Community, uh, Support Services and IEHP Navigators. Um, and then, um, we have a partnership with Making Hope Happen Foundation, uh, to provide youth mental health first aid trainings for certified and classified staff members, and mental health first aid trainings for our administrators to help support adults. Um, and both trainings look at providing an awareness around the warning signs and risk factors of mental health concerns, and then just like, um, physical first aid gives you an opportunity to know how to support students, um, immediate needs or adults' immediate needs, and then get them the resources from, uh, the trained experts. And, um, also launching some supports around, uh, staff social emotional learning, making sure that we have, um, lessons and activities for administrators to provide to their, um, their direct report staff, as well as a curriculum to help support our staff as they adjust um, back into the physical setting as well. Um, and without further ado, I'm gonna hand it off to Dr. Marlene Bykandova from Positive Youth Development, so thank you.
Thank you, Colleen, a good evening, everyone, as you hear throughout this presentation, I do wanna point out that all of these above and beyond efforts in terms of engagement will be done in collaboration with many other departments and even some community organizations, next slide, please. Thank you, with that, uh, in addition to our tiered interventions, here are a few things that we are working on. First, uh, with this one-time money, our dream is to put together a daily home visit, home visit engagement team. We wanna recruit a diverse group of guest teachers to work alongside our attendance assistants to be launched out daily to do home visits when students do not show up to school. So basically, instead of waiting for the absences to show up on student records, we wanna get out there the same day to problem-solve and help get students in school or online. Essentially, it's kind of like a same-day Operation Student Recovery effort. Second, the Youth Court Attendance Project. This is something that's being piloted under the direction of Mickey Chahusky from my department. The Youth Court team has taken on a group of chronically absent students, and they are using positive peer influence and incentives and restorative practices to improve student attendance, so this project, uh, we would love to make it much bigger. So with this one-time money, we can do that, the project is being done alongside Dr. Jen Tilton and the, uh, from the REACH Program at the University of Redlands. And lastly, we do intensive case management for our hardest-hit student groups, but we would love to expand this much greatly, or a lot. And this work is being done alongside, alongside at the department, parent engagement, and specialized programs. So essentially, we have groups of people that will be case-managing students, but also really working on the, um, barriers and myths and aversions that are keeping students from attending school. And of course, we can't have great engagement without parent support, which is, uh, what Beatrice Gonzalez is going to speak about, thank you, Beatrice.
Thank you, Dr. Bykandova, good evening, amazing board members and cabinet, Dr. Rogers and Dr. Wyatt, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about all the amazing things that our family engagement department is doing to support that, the ASAP plan, and parent outreach in particular, as you can see. I would like to first emphasize the word collaboration. The beauty of this ASAP plan revolves around extensive teamwork and collaboration, as you can see, all of us work together in a miraculous and amazing way, so I stand before you today very humbled and honored at all the hard work that collectively has taken place to make this plan come to fruition. I'm gonna start off with communication, the ASAP plan cannot move forward with that extensive collaboration with the Communications Department. Together, we're going to ensure that parents are aware of the different resources, the different programs and tools that are being made available as a result of this plan. We will make sure to be innovative and to find innovative ways to communicate, um, with our families, and in order for them to hear the same message about all the different services that are available to, to them. We're going to be using Peach John, we're also creating newsletters, magazines, guides. We've gone as far as looking into apps, we wanna send texts, social media, obviously news, radio channels, there's all these different sources that we're going to use to make sure that our families are very well aware of the opportunities that are going to be made available through them, to them through this plan. So next, we move on to academic support, we're going to continue to collaborate with elementary and secondary instruction, as well as with multilingual departments in the areas of reading and math, to provide our families with high-caliber workshops to support their children at home. A huge emphasis is going to be placed on our incoming preschool and kinder to, through third-grade families with early literacy development, we're going to continue to reinforce footsteps to brilliance and provide multiple workshops to support our families, footsteps to brilliance last year carried a summer program, and we wanna make sure that we continue with that if, if possible in order to support our families. Additional workshops are going to include, but are not limited to our Family University Series that focuses on orientation, navigation, leadership, and employment. Through this series of workshops, parents are going to be able to obtain certificates that they can use for future reference, um, or employment opportunities as well, so we're going to make sure that we revamp our family university and make it available to our families during, during this time. Um, and then the next one is family and physical and mental health needs, we're gonna continue to work with Swiss and Victor Community to provide families with mental and physical health workshops. We're going to continue to host and support district resources, including Hazel Health. Um, Victor's doing an amazing job with parent support groups, all these workshops are going to continue. Um, by popular demand, the parents are really, really enjoying these workshops and these different support groups, so we're going to continue with that. Um, during the summer, we're also going to continue our partnership with Loma Linda and the possible extension of the tutoring and mentoring program that we currently have. We're going to work with the community health education workers on chronic absenteeism, but we're going to just provide a different approach, we're gonna provide the families with different prevention me-measures as well as resources for our families to ensure that our students are in their seats on the first day of school. We're gonna check in with families during the summer that need support, we're gonna conduct home visits as needed, but we're just gonna be there to support. And so thankfully, Loma Linda's gonna be able to help us with that. As far as the ASAP plan, it causes to be innovative, and I just wanted to list some of the things that we're doing. We're gonna start book clubs with parents, we're gonna start book clubs with, with principals on how to better support their, um, families at the site, um, we're also going to have book clubs with parents, parents are asking for different types of book clubs, so we're gonna definitely, um, put that in place, we're gonna bring in, um, upon approval, a, a system that's a little bit different, it's called Fast Talk, and it's a family engagement lab that uses weekly text messages with tips and activities aligned with the district DLA standards, again, collaboration. Um, so more information's gonna come with that, but the parents are actually excited, we had some very, um, very vocal parents in our different meetings, and they expressed their desire to have something like that to support them at home, so more information to come with regards to that. One of the things that we've never done before is we've never had a family engagement site coordinator at each site, and so this plan will allow us to do that, um, this person's going to work collaboratively with our family engagement team and site admin to reinforce site-based family engagement efforts. The goal, and I've, we've heard the board extensively, is to build the, their capacity, to build the capacity of the site, to build the capacity of our family engagement, community relations workers as well, in order to provide them with the essential tools to support, um, with family engagement at the site, so a very strong conscientious effort is being made, um, and we're using the, the site family engagement coordinator specifically for that. There's other things that we're doing, we're, we're setting up block parties, and these block parties are gonna be, um, resource shares for our families, COVID permitted, obviously, under COVID, following COVID guidelines. Um, we wanna make sure that we work with IT, parents have asked for some type of checkout system with regards to devices um, that parents can use at home to access the different meetings that, that are being held virtually, and so we just wanna make sure that we collaborate with IT, and, um, in order to, to make this possible for our families, and we're working with preschool, we're working with, um, just different departments with regards to the summer school program. There's also a Summer of Excellence campaign that's taking place, where we're asking students to work to complete forty additional hours of reading, math, in order to be able to get ahead of the game, so there's tons of things that are going on with regards to family engagement, someone said it very well, when they said family engagement is everywhere, and that's very true, as a result of this plan, and the expected outcome for all of us is for parents and families to be supported during the summer throughout the year. Um, so we thank you, uh, just for giving us the opportunity as a whole to be able to do this, and I just wanna thank all of you for allowing me to speak, these are just a few of the amazing things, um, in place for our families. And again, it could not be done without the extensive cross-developmental, departmental collaboration. We could not do this alone, and everyone here is so graceful and so collaborative, and has just been there to support us every step of the way, so now, if I can pass it on to Ms. Cleveland, and she's gonna continue with our teaching and learning component of the plan.
All right, if we could have the next slide. Good evening, Board President Dr. Rogers, Vice President Dr. Wyatt, Cabinet and Community. I'm Michelle Cleveland. You're a Director of Accountability and Educational Technology, and I'm joined this evening by Dr. Suda Venkatasin, Dr. Tasha Doyzan, and Mr. Terry Komnik to bring you an overview of the teaching and learning components of our ASAP plan. It is our pleasure to be here this evening to give you an overview of our district-level comprehensive assessment system. It is our intent that the implementation of our restructured, streamlined, and enhanced system beginning in the 21-22 school year will achieve complete coherence between our curriculum, instruction, and assessment components in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. We know that everyone is working very hard to support our scholars, and we want to ensure that they have the highest-quality tools that will also support our educators in making the best decisions. The quote you see before you this evening has been a driving force for the work that we have done in bringing coherence to our system. Data shouldn't add more to our plate. It should determine what we put on our plates. It's become vitally important for us to streamline our assessments to maximize instructional time in the past year, and most importantly, to provide information to our dedicated teachers and support staff so that they are able to pivot and meet our individual scholar needs. It's crucial that we offer a standards-aligned and coherent system. Our Joint Assessment Committee has approved a tool and an assessment calendar that will support these goals. The NWEA MAP system is a research-based, not-for-profit organization that supports students and our educators worldwide by creating assessment solutions that measure growth and proficiency and also provide important insights into our students' levels so that we can provide appropriate instruction. The NWEA MAP assessment is norm-referenced, standards-based, and it precisely measures student performance, growth, and skills mastery, and allows us to support the learning needs of each of our students. All of the different reporting features that come with our NWEA MAP will allow our educators to assess students for readiness around our grade-level standards, inform their instructional choices, and make adjustments as needed. Additionally, the reporting features will allow for predictive analytics for school sites and our district-level departments to gauge how we are doing relative to the CASP performance during the spring summative testing season. In addition to the assessment as a benchmarking tool, the suite provides a set of instructional tools to support intervention and access to additional progress monitoring tools to support literacy, fluency, and numeracy. The NWEA assessment is also aligned to district tools already in use at many of our school sites as part of their support systems. Transitioning to the NWEA will allow us to streamline our assessment calendar by reducing the number of assessment windows required throughout the year because it combines the standards assessment and the skills-based knowledge diagnostic into one singular system. It also allows us to track student growth metrics throughout the year, both individually and as a cohort. And because it is a TK to twelve-aligned system, we will be able to track that data longitudinally over time. I will now turn it over to Dr. Venkatasin to discuss the professional systems that will be supporting our work.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleveland, and congratulations, Dr. Rogers. Good evening, everyone. We understand that ASAP created by the district level will only be successful if it's implemented with fidelity at school sites with needed support. Next slide, please. At the school sites with needed support from the district. So in order to facilitate that, every school is creating a professional learning plan that will serve as each site's blueprint and will contain action steps for implementing the different facets of ASAP. So the professional learning plan will highlight a school-wide academic, social-emotional learning and attendance goal as well as additional goals for specific student groups as needed for individual sites. They will list the action steps that will be taken at the school sites to achieve their goals. The plan will also list the direct supports the school will be offering, such as tutoring, small-group instruction, and so on for the students. It will also list the strategies that school sites will be using in order to reengage our families. But generally, with the district-level PD under teaching and learning, our focus is heavily on instruction at the site leader meetings, and we provide small-group supports and one-on-one support with the implementation and creation of professional learning plans. At site leader meetings, a major part of the time is allocated for site leaders to interact with other school leaders to collaborate and learn from each other. Our content and pedagogy professional development we provide our teachers include how to deliver small-group instructions in classrooms. Our curriculum guides are written in detail for teachers on how to support different student groups using differentiated strategies, strength-based approach, and pedagogy that is culturally and linguistically relevant. We embed technology with instruction, and technology trainings are consistently offered on platforms as well as on the use of the devices. In all these things, we do take a TK-12 approach and the whole-child approach without losing our focus on social-emotional learning and cultural and linguistic relevance. We continuously collaborate and work across departments and divisions to host professional developments around elements that are heavily focused on the ASAP plan. At this time, I want to turn it over to Mr. Komnik. Next slide, please.
Hello, good evening, Dr. Dowdy Rogers. Congratulations, Dr. Wyatt, Board, Dr. Volker, Cabinet, Staff, and Community. I really appreciate the opportunity to share this part of the presentation, and I can't agree more with Ms. Applegate and the team with regard to the intercollaboration that we have on a regular basis, but in specific with this design and creation and development of this ASAP plan. I'd like to reiterate the coherence and interconnectedness between the ASAP, the site plan, the SPSAs, and the Local Control and Accountability Plan. The ASAP plan is really part and parcel with the AB-86 Required Expanded Learning Opportunity Plan. And with that, in the, in the school plan, there is a direct alignment between the professional learning aspect of it, the re-engaging and accelerating student learning. Those action steps that Dr. Venkatasin just spoke about are what is the potential cost elements that a, a, a site might have to bear. Their site allocations are aligned to the needs they've identified to meet these, to meet these needs. And in addition to the state funding they have at the sites, they also receive the federal funding that furthers their, their enhancement and supplemental support for the identified needs. All of this is aligned to our overarching plan, referred to as the LCAP. The goals are consistent within the school plan for student achievement. And as, as you recall, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan replaced the LCAP this year, but is definitely in alignment with not only the virtual remote learning, but also with the professional development required to ensure that our teachers are best prepared to meet the needs that this environment has created. With that, I would like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Doyzan.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, everyone. So far, we've detailed our, next slide, please. So far, we've detailed our plans for a comprehensive assessment system, the social-emotional learning and the teaching and learning aspects of our ASAP plan. Now, we come to the last component of our ASAP plan where we're going to share with you how this ASAP plan provides us with the vision and the direction for provided extending learning opportunities and supports for our students. Next slide, please. So one such direct learning opportunity we are providing our students this year is summer school for all. Summer school is being offered to currently enrolled students TK-12. In this slide, I will go over the model and the delivery of summer school for TK-8. Summer school will be a period of fifteen days, beginning June 7 through June 25 for TK-8. As you see in the slide here, the middle school and elementary starts and end at different hours to provide for transportation for students that are eligible. There will be a minimum of four hours of ELA math and an enrichment or elective instruction for TK-8 students. Breakfast and lunch will be included for the students attending summer school. In order to facilitate ease of signup for the parents, a centralized Google form has been created and went live this past Friday and will close on May 7. We are already seeing high interest in parents signing up their students for summer school. You can see the district link, and parents can access this on the SBCUSD website located under Ed Services. In order to provide equity and access and parity in the education that our students receive, the district will provide the curriculum and professional development needed to successfully implement these lessons. The exploratory electives and enrichment can be in the form of visual and performing arts, physical education, or academic elective such as robotics. We have developed themes for the two levels. Summer camp will be taking place for elementary TK-5 and summer bridge for grade six through eight at middle school. Now, I will turn it back over to Dr. Venkatasin to discuss high school summer school offerings. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Doyzan. There are two types of summer school that will be offered in SBCUSD for our high school students this summer. First box is about the information on summer school that will be offered at all of our comprehensive high schools and the two continuation high schools. There will be an in-person bridge that is offered for all incoming ninth graders at all the comprehensive high schools using a cohort model. Additionally, all high schools are providing a comprehensive credit recovery program that is predominantly offered in an online format. However, small-group instruction, tutoring, and other supports for special education students and English learner students are provided, are provided in person beyond the online instruction. High schools begin their program on June 7, but the ending dates vary based on the unique needs and context of each school, especially keeping in mind the importance of recovering credit for all our students. All high schools will participate in their own enrollment drive to register students for summer school. So the second type of high school offering is called the Superintendent Summer Grad that is going to continue this year too and is focused completely on credit recovery for high school diploma. It will be offered for current seniors who are shy of a few credits for earning the diploma. So it will be offered in person at Sierra High School where the students will also get instructional support in order to complete their credits. Students that cannot participate in the in-person credit recovery program that's offered through the Superintendent Summer Grad will also be provided a virtual learning opportunity to clear credits. And this Superintendent Summer Grad will run from July 7 to July 14. The program that is offered at the district level by secondary education will be our final efforts to capture all the students that have not been able to attend, attend at a high school credit recovery program. Next slide, please.
So this past, oh, sorry. So this past year, we wanted to specifically address the needs of students in early literacy due to remote learning. We were able to house one resident guest teacher at every site for the purposes of supporting teachers in early literacy development with our youngest learners. And with the help and collaboration from our human resources team, the resident guest teachers were assigned to each site with the purpose of providing small-group early literacy instructional supports for students TK-3. Weekly professional development was provided in collaboration with our multilingual department to support all of our students in the different programs such as dual mainstream. During the weekly PD, they were explicitly taught foundational skills and routines to support students. Their focus of small virtual group sessions with students allowed for increased practice and attainment of those key foundational skills. The team of guest teachers demonstrated ongoing dedication and commitment as they engaged in reflective conversations with colleagues and support staff. Schools have expressed increased levels of engagement among students in these small-group settings. Hence, the district is planning to expand literacy supports TK-6, and additionally, we are planning to add math supports for TK-6. Next slide.
SBCUSD and especially our board has been very sensitive to the hardships and the needs of some of our students at our high schools, the, the high school students are facing at this difficult time. So as part of our recommendations under the ASAP, our board has passed an additional component under the mitigation policy to approve graduation for selected students with hundred-and-thirty credits that aligns with the state requirements as opposed to our regular two-hundred-twenty credits required. This will be, this will benefit our students experiencing significant hardships related to COVID-19 pandemic. The action to reduce credits will be decided collectively by a team that consists of the student, parent, administrator, counselor, teachers, and so on. Our district will also inform the students and parents of having the fifth-year option available for them if they don't want to graduate with reduced credits. As previously mentioned, under ASAP, we are providing online as well as in-person format to help credit query, which I went through in detail in the previous slide. Tasha?
Additionally, as part of the ASAP plan, we will be offering robust tutoring and enrichment for all of our students to meet their needs. These offerings will include enhanced programs with current district partners and programs as well as new services. As we move forward, we will be looking to build additional teaching and learning into our school calendar with short intensive instruction intercessions during breaks in the regular calendar. As with our regular school programming, we will continue to use a strong foundation of social-emotional learning to support our students and their families within these extra opportunities. Next slide.
Now, we'll proceed with some targeted student group support, and our first director that will be speaking to that is Dr. Lundey.
Good evening, Board. Thank you. Next slide, please. Good evening. I'm Dr. Lundey, Director of Special Education, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the accelerated programs that we have for special education. So by the nature of special ed, most of the things that we already do is considered extra because our students have IEPs. So this year, we will be continuing with our extended school year program, which will happen in the summer, and that is specifically with students on IEPs who have moderate to severe designations, or for this year, we're doing emotionally disturbed as well. Within this, we've already decided that this is going to be both in-person and virtually. Our students have already been identified, and their classes have already been assigned. We're also looking at collaborating with the other departments to look at early prevention systems. So tagging on to the programs for our summer, doing the summer bridge program where we're targeting our students with IEPs who are transitioning into eighth grade, from eighth grade into ninth grade, and working with them to focus specifically on math skills, looking at algebra readiness, and in collaboration, creating a mentorship opportunity for those students as well to make sure that as they transition to those upper grades that they have already connected to someone at that school site so that they feel connected throughout the school. Also, tagging along to the early literacy initiative and looking at training our RSP teachers in early literacy, similar to what was done and with early, with elementary education with the the substitute teachers, looking specifically at teaching those intensive reading skills with the hopes that for our students, the ones who have maybe lost out on some learning or in addition, who are struggling in RSP or maybe already be male-modern, if we can catch them in those early grade levels and do early intervention and prevention, we can move them into a least restrictive environment. On top of that, throughout the school year, we're looking at our middle schools across the board. On top of that, throughout the school year, we're looking at our middle schools across the board, looking at bringing in support classes. So making sure that we have standardized support classes across all of our middle schools and providing them with the support to not look at, only look at academic acceleration, but also looking at the social emotional skills as well as those readiness skills throughout the entire district. Also continuing with our after-school supports, the pushing in for tutoring and additional services as well as working with the other departments on summer school. Additionally, we're looking at universal design for learning and summer teacher training as well. And as our students are also going to be pushing in into the regular summer school, looking at a totally inclusive model for those students and pushing in supports to make sure that our students not only have access educationally as well as socially and emotionally. Thank you.
Next slide, please. I'd like to introduce Mr. Les Ojeda from the English learners or from the multilingual programs department.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. I appreciate that. Good evening, Board. It's a pleasure with me to be here with you this evening to share some of the things that we're doing as part of the extended learning plan for our English learners in our district. As you know, we have over ten thousand English learners and we have six thousand, about six thousand students that have been reclassified, but we continually monitor to make sure that they're still achieving academic success and do not regress. So that's about sixteen thousand students that we're responsible for with or without COVID. And so it's been challenging during this COVID time for our EL population of students to be able to maintain a level of academic success like many other students. But more so, you might imagine a person that doesn't speak very little English trying to learn online with, with not having an in-person support resource can be very challenging. And so I want to share with you some of the things that we're doing for our English learner students to help support them. I want to start out by talking about our summer school program. You mentioned Dr. Venkatesan speak about the Superintendent's Credit Recovery Program. And that's been going on for quite a few years, is my understanding. What you might not know is that concurrently, we run an English learner Superintendent's Credit Recovery Program designed specifically for our English learners, newcomers and our LTEL students. And the difference is that we have bilingual credential teachers teaching those courses so that they're able to provide intervention, language intervention for the students that need the extra support. Furthermore, we also hire interns, college interns to be able to be in those classes with the bilingual teacher in a classroom environment that's much smaller than it would be in a regular credit recovery summer school program. So that's one of the things that we're very proud of that we do. We've had a lot of success. And we plan on actually increasing our number of students, EL students that are participating in this program. We're also going to be looking into offering A through G access this year, which is something a little bit different. We're researching and trying to find teachers that are credentialed in specific subject areas like English and math so that our English learners can have access through A through G credits during summer school as well. The next point I'd like to talk about, and Dr. Doisan talked a little bit about our guest teacher program at the elementary school, which we're very proud and helping to support and provide professional development to those guest teachers. We also do the same thing in providing professional development for our paraprofessionals and our interns that support small group instruction, primarily at our secondary schools this year. I'm very happy to say that we were able to provide all our high schools and middle schools this year with a college intern, at at least one college intern to provide support for our English learners. We looked at the number of English learner students at some of our larger schools and we were able to provide two college interns to help support the higher number of English learners at those sites. And that's something that we're going to be looking to expand at the elementary level next year. We're also looking at, as a theme, I think everybody's doing this, is looking at differentiated small instruction as a focus to help support our English learners. We have a large variety of newcomers in our district, students that have been in schools less, two years or less. We have a high population of at-risk LTELs and long-term English learners. And we're looking at continuing to research and purchase specially-designed digital EL curriculum that goes above and beyond what's normally given to our students. We're looking for research-based type of programs, some of the ones that we, that we've used in the past that have gotten us some success and we're continuing to look, continue to look at is I-Lit, Res Plus and I Station, just to name a few. And then finally, we're also looking at purchasing an English language acquisition tutoring program. We currently use Rosetta Stone in our district for students that want that extra support. But we're actually looking at something different, as Ms. Applegate spoke, thinking outside the box. So right now, we're in the process of researching different companies that provide English language acquisition tutoring programs. And I'm hopeful and optimistic that we'll be able to find one that meets the needs of our kids and be able to provide that for them. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Dr. Will Greer in our ETS department.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ojeda. Good evening all and congrats on the milestone, Dr. Rogers. The ETS department is excited to support our schools and students in several ways. If we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So the first is our data-driven equity model pilot. So select school site teams in grades three for English and grades four, five and eight for math. We'll be working with those sites this coming year per the Improvement Plan for African-American Student Achievement. We'll be using a continuous improvement cycle of assessment, analysis, planning and reteaching. We're excited about this model because it will help us better understand how African-American students are doing on the standards, where they need support and how we can systematically ensure they achieve excellence. So we're excited about that. The next way that we're supporting is with increased A through G equity planning and monitoring. So we're currently developing a tiered set of recommendations for all of our four hundred and eight incoming African-American high school freshmen. Our recommendations will include program placement, supports and integrated Math One scheduling. We're looking into hiring two high school equity counselors as well, and they would help with plan implementation and student monitoring. Next is the African-American attendance team, and I think Dr. Bykendova might have, might have referenced this or might have, might have mentioned this. So this is an interdepartmental team of nineteen. Each school site has an African-American attendance team rep. I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to Beatrice and Family Engagement. About half of the people on the team are either, they either work for Family Engagement or they're associated with Family Engagement. And we're grateful for the support and the guidance from Positive Youth Development and enrollment as well. Leonard Buckner, the Director of Enrollment, is, is, has been a critical piece of the team too. So we meet weekly both as a team and with site attendance leads. Currently, we have two thousand two hundred and twenty-four Tier One African-American students, meaning that they just have zero to two absences. So pretty good attendance. Our goal there is to ensure that they're part of the schools of their school's positive incentives program and that they're receiving positive homeschool communications. And we also have seven hundred and eighty-five Tier Two African-American students. So these are our students with nine to fifteen absences just before they get to eighteen, which is, you know, technically chronically absent. Our goal there is to ensure that all of their absences are accurate and valid and then to identify needs and barriers such as the loss of a loved one, homelessness, hunger, unemployment. You know, all the things that we know will absolutely prevent a scholar from attending school and that can kind of cloud and get in the way of good attendance. So our goal there is to try to coordinate support where possible. Next, we have our African-American family workshop. So this is a series of workshops and town halls for families that will run from May through the summer. Our first workshop is titled High School Excellence Strategies for Success. We're planning that currently for May thirteenth. And that's going to be for the families of our four hundred and eight incoming African-American freshmen. Another workshop that we're planning is, is going to be tied, tentatively titled, Our Scholars Read: Strategies for Third Grade Success. This is going to be presented in the summer, and this is for the families of our roughly five hundred and eighty incoming third graders. And then we're planning another workshop called Math Success: Tips for Being a Top Math Student, which will also present to families in the summer for nearly fifteen hundred incoming fourth, fifth and eighth graders per the Improvement Plan for African-American Student Achievement. The last piece here is of course district professional development. So we've created some new professional development this year that we're really excited about. So we have our new APAC training, which is titled African-American Parent Advisory Councils: A Model for Empowering Families. We've been piloting this training all year with sixteen schools and we've created a fairly reliable, pretty foolproof system for creating parent-driven site APACs. It's rooted in building relationships with families, learning about the issues that are most important to them, ensuring that those issues drive the APAC agenda and empowering parents of African-American students to lead. And in our, our last training, our other training is called Gap Closing Teaching: A Brain-Based Approach to African-American Student Achievement. We piloted this training with three schools this winter and we're going to share that next year with select grade level, level teams. So I'm now going to pass it on to Ms. Urquides to share some of the great work that they're doing in planning and alternative programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Good evening, Angela Urquides, Director of Specialized Programs. Thank you for allowing me to share. The Atlas team is committed to locating, identifying and visiting families to energize and reengage them. Liaisons will visit our local shelters and motels in and around the city to meet with our students and families in homeless situations. And they will also meet with our students in foster care living in group homes within our community. During these visits, we will share information on summer school and the new school year. Liaisons will be providing students with backpacks and school supplies, making sure they have what they need to start attending school as well as get students and families energized about the opportunities that await them. During these visits, Atlas will also be providing students and families with information on resources and supports they need to be successful. These include transportation, food, clothing, hygiene supplies and access to basic needs. Liaisons will also provide information on students' educational rights, including enrollment guidelines and attending their school of origin. The Atlas program will also continue their outreach and collaboration with our community agencies and resources facilities, connecting our students and families with the resources available to them. Liaisons will also begin to identify students for case management and additional support services. They will use current data and collaborate with stakeholders to establish goals, interventions and progress monitoring for positive student outcomes. Thank you. Now I'll hand it back to Mrs. Applegate.
Thank you, Ms. Urquides. Next slide, please. So Board, you can see the talented team that we have that really works as hard as they can to make sure that our students are having their needs met. And as you can see, also considering staff and families as well. So the ASAP wasn't only to help recuperate some of that unfinished learning, but we've really taken into consideration our staff and our families as well. So in summary, as you've seen, it's, it's an all-hands-on-deck collaborative approach to making sure that we're building staff capacity. You have to, I, I want to really reiterate that we do have a great base program. A lot of these things are above and beyond and they're improving that base program. So this isn't everything. You know, I apologize for the length, but I really wanted the directors to showcase their work. They've done a fantastic job collaboratively. You have to imagine it's been maybe two months, month and a half, that they've been working collaboratively two to three times a week to put all of this together for our students and their families, working with teachers and working with administrators and all stakeholders. We also want to highlight that it provides us a framework and it encourages collective efficacy. We know that that's a huge determinant in student achievement, according to Hattie's work. We want to make sure that everybody is clear and understands the ASAP so that we can provide all those supports for our students. And very importantly, we want to make sure we know that there is funding coming. We know that there is a lot of money attached to AB eighty-six and the requirements that the state has put forth. But overall, it's, it's the right thing to do, more so than the requirements, right? So we want to make sure that we have our priorities straight so that we can fund that. And then we also want to make sure that Board, we bring you the completed plan in written form for you to review. These are all the highlights of some of the major, major things in the ASAP, but believe it or not, it's not everything. And I think finally, I'm just so proud of this team. They've worked so well together. And I want you to know that we are completely committed, all of us, every one of us, completely committed to making sure that our students, our family and our staff have what they need as we come back. As I mentioned earlier, we want to welcome them with open arms. We want our kids to know that we're here for them and that we are just committed to their success. And I think in all of this, we, we are going to really make sure that we have the right service delivery model. We want to make sure that we are able to really work with our schools the way we need to and have the touches that we need with our schools so that we can implement this plan. It's an ambitious plan. The Board, you, you directed us to look at the legislation and to provide these opportunities for our students. So hopefully, we, we've met the goal of doing that. And that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Applegate. And I, there is a question on Dr. Flores.
Well, there's a comment, several comments. I just want to commend you all for such a detailed and very specific presentation and how everything, you know, is interwoven with each other. It's a lot of work and I love the name ASAP, as soon as possible. And it captures your dedication, all of your collective knowledge and experience and, and how everything intersects. I just want to commend you all. It's just incredible. Thank you, Mrs. Applegate, for leading the team. It shows that you have been thoughtful and how everything intersects with everything. I, I just have a couple of questions in terms of, I love the wellness focus that we're going to be working in the healing part, you know, for our students. So my question is, I didn't hear you, or maybe I missed it. Are you also planning on providing wellness and social emotional support to our staff, our teachers and our staff?
Yes, Dr. Flores. I'm Ms. Williams. I know you're still here. She did mention something about the staff.
Oh, she did? Okay, I must have missed it. Okay, I missed it.
Ms. Williams, if you wanted to say that.
Okay, if I missed it, I, I'm glad that, I just wanted to confirm it. And then Suda, I, I wanted to ask about high school. The elementary had the, Ms. Doison, Dr. Doison put the times, but what, what are the times for high school?
So the high schools, the start time for most of the high schools, are you talking about the days or are you talking about?
No, about the start time, about the start time.
The start time is anywhere, any time between eight to nine AM. So schools, different schools have planned their ninth grade summer bridge between, either they some start at eight o'clock or most of them, they start at nine.
Okay. And then in terms of, I wanted to know how it was decided who does the virtual and who comes in person? Do the, the, do the parents decide that? Or does he, school decide that? Is every school going to have that option, every high school?
Yes. All the schools are offering, all the schools are offering, they, they want to offer in-person for incoming ninth graders for the bridge program. However, they also offer, so since it's a cohort model, the students can still rotate. There could be a cohort A that comes in for two days and there will be a cohort B that will come, come in for the next two days. And then the, the students will also have this asynchronous instruction. So.
Oh, so they're not going to be there every day, the in-person people?
Yeah, not every student are going to be every, every day for summer school because we are looking at like seven hundred incoming students. In order to make sure that we maintain safety, they are following a hybrid model at most of the high schools.
So this is for all of you, Ms., Mrs. Applegate. You know that I'm a teacher educator. And have you provided time for the teachers prior to starting summer school? Sufficient time for them to plan and work with their administrations and their colleagues? Is that embedded in there?
Yes, Dr. Flores, they will have time. We are actually negotiating that. And we'll be meeting with our SBTA president, Ms. Alcala, Beatrice Alcala and Dr. Funches to do that. But yes, we do have that. We're very conscious of the fact that they do need some time. We just need to get out on the dates and compensation and any of those other things that need to be negotiated.
Okay, well, just, you know, lots of, lots of gratitude to you all for all the hard work. All the detail and specifics are so, I know it took a long time, but I love it. I mean, I, I, I think it's very necessary for us as a board to know, you know, the expertise that you all have, the thoughtfulness, how you have worked together. That's, that's the key, how we work together in terms of providing the best, you know, providing the potential, the best for our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Okay, then. Okay, then there, let me see, oh no, I see one. Dr. Volkamore, that's you in there.
Yes, thank you, thank, excuse me, thank you, President Rogers. I just wanted to say, board, we apologize for giving you a drink from a fire hose. We know it was a lot, but there's a lot going on and, and it just demonstrates the commitment of the team to really taking AB 86 and everything that goes along with it seriously for all of our students. You saw, you saw bits and pieces tonight of special supports for all students, special supports for particular groups of students. And a, and a very comprehensive and deliberate approach to making sure that we're making up for some lost time for any students that need to recover some learning. I want to commend all of our team, particularly Mrs. Applegate for leading this, but all of those who presented tonight, and there are many, many more behind them that have been working diligently for some time now on a very quick pace. This, this hasn't been one where we can stretch out a task force for two years. We need to bring it up and get it done quickly. And I just want to thank them for all that they've done that you've seen tonight. So kudos, kudos to you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mrs. Applegate, I know we had talked about the video. Is it there tonight? Okay.
We are actually highlighting our Swiss department. So you'll be hearing a little bit more about everything that's been done around the island health. So yes, next slide, please.
Go ahead and cue it up.
Hi, I'm Colleen Williams, the Director of Student Wellness and Support Services. Our department is comprised of a passionate group of professionals that support school site staff and students in various ways. Much of what we do is research, integrate and develop the SBCUSD way of creating welcoming, safe and inclusive learning environments for all students. Our goal is for students to thrive and succeed in school and beyond. With the leadership and vision of Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, we continue to evolve our supports to meet the needs of all families. Additionally, our health services team of registered school nurses, LVNs and clerical staff joined the Swiss department in June of 2020. With the expertise of these individuals, we are creating a comprehensive wellness, multi-tiered system of support, as you can see from our next steps.
Hi, I'm Mario Hockes, the Assistant Director of Student Wellness and Support Services. Over the, the course of the last 13 months, our entire team has worked to adjust, revise and provide supports for our school staff and students to flourish in spite of the challenges of the virtual environment. It is because of this team that we have been able to accomplish the highlights that we will be sharing.
We are extremely thankful to the Board of Education for their vision and commitment to meet the needs of students' social, emotional and physical health. Thank you.
The Swiss team has been very instrumental with our work at Lancashire. Over the last year, our program specialists have continued to build the capacity of our SC3 coaches and our tier one and tier two teams so that we can become more self-sufficient in reviewing, monitoring and modifying our procedures and systems for our PBIS, SEL and restorative conversation goals. The Lancashire Lions would not be as successful as we are without Swiss support and we hope that we're able to continue to work with them in various capacities.
I just want to say thank you to the Swiss team from Student Wellness and Support Services for helping Marshall take our school climate and culture to the next level. We've been working with the team to develop a deeper understanding of our own social, emotional wellbeing as adults and then how to build better relationships with our students. Through this process, we are helping students understand their feelings, show empathy for others and make responsible decisions. We have made an investment at Marshall that will brighten our students' future with improved academic performance and emotional wellbeing.
Heart Services has significantly benefited our family in a multitude of ways that are too numerous to recall. From strengthening our relationships to bettering our mental health, it is truly a blessing to have a remarkable program with staff members that embody care and compassion. I'm very grateful that my daughter is seeing a heart therapist because I've noticed a positive change in her since starting therapy. It made me realize that I'm not alone and it made me control myself when I have different emotions. It lightens up my day. It makes 45 minutes of my day fun because sometimes you just need to talk to someone. The Lata Creek family has endured two tragic losses in 2020. It has been a comfort and a blessing to have the District Crisis Intervention Team supporting us through these difficult times and knowing SBCUSD provides not only this team, but also the Employee Support Services to all employees. The District Crisis Intervention Team have provided invaluable emotional support for our students and staff when we have suffered the death of a student and/or staff member. They have allowed our students to process grief so that they can learn healthy grieving processes instead of contributing to additional trauma and maladaptive coping strategies. They help the students regulate so that they can resume their whole self back into learning.
And that is our presentation. Thank you, board.
Thank you again, Mrs. Applegate and to everyone. What a great presentation, lots of information. But again, I just want to say to the Swiss team, that's why you're Golden Bell. Congratulations again on that. We appreciate you. All right, we are now moving to 10.0 reports and comments. 10.1 is our board members and I am looking in the chat to see if there are any comments. All right, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Madam President. The, the piece that pulled it together for me tonight was the connecting link and it's all connected with what all of you are doing with HR, who has done a phenomenal job to our SBTA, who's a part of that link, our teachers, directors, cabinet members, our interim superintendent, and it's a good feeling knowing that you're all connected and we're all working for the same thing, for the best we can do for our students. So I just want to say to all of you who presented, you did an outstanding job and I certainly appreciate all of you. Teachers, custodians, ground keepers, you, you, you're all a part of that link and you're doing a great job. So I commend you again. My only other comment is, you know, we have the San Bernardino Symphony and they've been very good in providing our students with tickets to their events. The conductor, Mr. Proftner has done a good job working with our students offsite and everything else. But then as I was going in to purchase my ticket a few months ago, I looked at the sponsors and did not see San Bernardino. So I'm just want to ask my fellow board members, if you could just, maybe by next time, we can talk about maybe being a sponsor because they have, they have really given to thousands and thousands of our kids and we certainly need to give to them for their support. So thank you for this opportunity and again, everybody, a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Flores?
Ah, yes, I just wanted to share with the board and the public and our, and our cabinet that three, three things today. This past week, last week, actually, I attended a multicultural training with Dr. Daniel Walker through the multilingual department. I think we had about 125 teachers. It was amazing. I love Dr. Walker. He is so full of life and so full of knowledge. And what I really, how would you say, not just admire, but appreciate is his knowledge of the Afro-Latino connection and how we are connected historically. And he just really knows his stuff. I mean, some stuff that he shares, I don't even know. And I ask him, I asked him for the, for the, you know, he, he said, he gives the citations. And, and our teachers, what's even more profound is that the teachers ask tremendous questions and have insights. And I'd like to commend Melanie McGrath for organizing that from the multilingual department. And then last night, I had the pleasure and honor to attend Teachers of Color Forum. Dr. Funches, you did an incredible job. I, I just commend you for your work on leading that forum and organizing it. And it was very, very well attended and it segues into our grow our own teachers of color, our community-based teachers. So I, I think you've taken it a step further and just, you know, and connecting the dots. Then today, I participated in a CSBA broadband webinar for an hour and a half. It was very insightful. I know that we wrote, President Rogers, we wrote a letter of support, right, for the broadband.
Yes, we did.
Senator Lorena Sanchez was on there and Assembly Member Art, I can never say his name, it starts with an M. They were just tremendous. We had a rural board member and Abigail Solis. And then we had another board member from San Jose area. So they represented small rural districts and urban districts. And the, I think it's recorded, Dr. Volkamore, if your staff wants to look at it because the issues that were presented were really big. And the main thing that they spoke about was a bond of $10 billion that is, you know, going through the legislature for us to, to put, and, and the other insight was how we need to work together with our cities, our counties and, and also school districts in collaborating and share costing, but also building the infrastructure to provide equity and access to broadband. So those were the two takeaways that I had today from that. There are other ones, but those were the major ones. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Let's see, that is all that I see. So I will say, I don't, unless they come in while I'm talking. But ditto to what you said, I was there as well. This broadband is really a huge something. I think we're in the forefront because we have about four letters in, I've been able to give to legislators. So they did, they did do a great job today. I really liked how they represented working together. I did want to say the highlight, trailing with you, Dr. Flores and many others, we were at duplicate meetings. But I will talk about the student advisory. I really, really enjoyed that meeting. It was great. They put it together. They were planning different activities and engaging the things that you guys have been able to do with our students was amazing. They all became lions that night, which was really, really good. And I just want to encourage the team that is constantly working with our student advisory. We, we still have a commitment to student board members, just the pandemic just got us kind of in this crazy thing. But we do have a commitment and even to some before they graduate. So we want to, you know, make sure that they know that because that civic engagement piece is very meaningful to us. And so we want to make sure that we're doing that. And as I said, I'm going to continue to be a pest around those couple of initiatives. I think, and as you just talked about, multilingual, bilingual literacy for all is, is very dual. Dual enrollment is very important to our community. It is what we can do to raise the bar on our students that do stay and do not go away for school. So I'll be looking forward to continuing that conversation as we look at our diversity, equity, inclusion as we come together as a board and challenge ourselves to be the example to our community. So thank you all again. Great presentation. And if there, oh, and just lastly, had an opportunity with Dr. Hill, we talked with the IT department and, and I think sometimes they don't get, get acknowledged as well. But imagine if we didn't have our IT working along during these times, where will we all be? We definitely wouldn't be on the Zoom. So thank you again to the team there and with Ms. Christakos working there along with them. Now I will turn it over to the next 10.2 superintendent and staff. Dr. Volkamore, are you there? Are you there?
Mute.
Okay, again.
Thank you. Number of recognitions we want to highlight for the board this evening. You know, it seems like the school year just started. It's scholarship season already. And we have so many members of our community that are so generous with scholarships for our, our well-deserving seniors. But we want to thank to this evening, particularly our partners with the RIMS Avid Scholarship Committee. Due to their creative fundraising efforts and the support of many generous donors during this pandemic year, the committee will award 11 scholarships of $1,500 each, that's pretty good scholarship, to 11 of our seniors this year. So we're very excited. We want to thank the RIMS Avid Scholarship Committee and extend a special congratulations to our seniors on this scholarship award. I want to congratulate Golden Valley Middle School for being re-designated as a 2021 California Department of Education School to Watch. This program seeks to recognize high-impact and comprehensive model middle schools. They received their first designation in 2018 and were re-designated during this, for this next three-year cycle as well. Kudos to Principal Gabriel Diaz and his team and the wonderful Knights of Golden Valley. And in terms of staff recognition, we want to recognize Trey Painter, who is a Curtis Middle School demonstration teacher, who is a recipient of the 2021 who is a recipient of the 2021 Education Medal of Honor awarded by the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. The spring awards will be taking place this Monday at 6:00 PM. We've got a lot going on. We've also got our town hall meeting. But April 26th at 6:00 PM will be held virtually. So Board, if you'd like to join, a number of us who will be there supporting Mr. Painter on this great recognition, please let Karen know, and we'll make sure we get you hooked into that. The NOM Foundation, as you heard last time, but I wanted to confirm it. The NOM Foundation has recognized our district as a best community for music education for the outstanding efforts of teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who are making music part of a well-rounded education for every child in our community. I want to congratulate Scott Nelson, our Coordinator for Visual and Performing Arts, and all those involved in our music programs on this excellent accomplishment. We know that's a big, huge priority for the board, and I know that's a very special recognition for our school district as a result. Another recognition we want to point out very quickly is we have had a very, very, very successful energy management program for a number of years. About four or five years ago, we won the EPA's Executive Level Award as a school district. We were the only school district in the country to win that award that year. And they have a program, a kind of a complimentary program called Energy Star, where a building can be designated as an Energy Star Award-winning building. This year, they upped the ante on the criteria significantly to be designated as an Energy Star EPA building. And 45 of our campuses qualified and received the Energy Star certification again this year. So I want to congratulate Janie Christakos, Sam Precy, and all those that are involved in our energy management program for that great accomplishment. Three quick announcements. We do, as I mentioned earlier, we have our town hall meeting April 26th at 6:00 PM to about 8:00 to share the district's planning around safety protocols as we move to reopen school sites and departments. It is going to be a virtual meeting. Board, again, let Karen know if you would like to be a part of that. We have Operation Student Recovery coming up on April 27th. That's a Tuesday from 9:00 to 12:00. We will be focusing on foster and homeless youth this time around. Same thing, Board, let Karen know if you'd like to be a part of that. It's always a great, great experience to interface with our kids and families. And then our next LCAP meeting, that's going to, we're going to be approving our next three-year LCAP plan prior to June 30th. And so we'll have a meeting Tuesday, April 27th, from 5:30 to 7:00 to gather community input for our LCAP same drill board. And then finally, and one last time, congratulations to the newest doctor in the house, Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. Thank you. Those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Volkamore, and we are now at 11.0 Consent Items.
So moved.
Second. All right, good. You beat me, Danny. To pull? Are we pulling, going once, going twice? We're not pulling anything? Okay, well, I'm going, go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye, motion carried. All right, we're moving on down to 12.1 Personnel Report Number 17 dated April 202021.
As presented, Board.
It's been moved in second. Question, I will take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye, motion carried. 12.2 Consideration and Approval of the Employment Contract Superintendent.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, we will take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios? Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye, motion carried. Thank you. 12.3 Grant Physical Education Credits for Athletics and Other Sports Under Education Code 51225.
So moved.
Second. Oh, let Scott do second. Okay, it's been moved. Hopefully, Ms. Cunningham got it. All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, seeing none. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye, motion carried. 12.4 Approval of Title Changes of Selected Board Policies.
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved in second.
Second.
All right. Seconds, a whole lot. If there's no discussion, seeing or hearing none, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Some moves. I mean, yes, aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Hill? Dr. Hill? Are you in mute, Dr. Hill? Do you all see her? Can you see her? I can't. Okay, Dr. Wyatt?
Aye, I don't see her.
All right, maybe her internet. Dr. Doughty Rogers, motion carried. And Karen, just take note of that. 12.5 Approval of Deletion of Selected Board Policies.
Question.
So moved, second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios? Ms. Abios? Is she there? I can't see her.
She's muted.
She's muted. Okay, Dr. Hill, is she back?
Yeah, I'm back. They kicked me off, but I'm back. Aye.
Okay.
I'm back as well.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Doughty Rogers, aye, motion carried. All right, we are now at 13.0 Summary of Board Members Requests and 13.1 Review of Requests. Who is on deck tonight for that?
It's me tonight, so I missed you a couple of weeks ago when I was on vacation. So we'll see if I still am in practice. So I, hopefully, I'm not still on vacation mode, so.
Welcome back.
Captured a few items for you, and actually, several questions that you asked were answered in the presentations. So hopefully, I did not include those, so hopefully, I didn't miss any that you didn't feel were answered. So first, Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we develop a plan for providing transportation for any student who wanted to attend summer school. Then Mr. Danny Tillman and Dr. Barbara Flores both asked that we consider options for allowing employees who need childcare accommodations to continue to work remotely. Then Mr. Danny Tillman, Dr. Barbara Flores, and Dr. Scott Wyatt all asked that we add a virtual summer school option. Then Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we create a subcommittee of parents, teachers, students to engage in conversations around the return to work and school.
I think they, just to clarify, I think they already, from what Dr. Monade has mentioned, she clarified afterwards for me, so they do, they are planning a subcommittee.
So I can take this one off?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay. I'll find where I was. Okay, then, Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we be more explicit about adding the Virtual Academy to the vision and goals for the roadmap that we're developing. Dr. Flores also asked that we consider broadening the scope or the focus from just student-centered to make sure that we also are cognizant of other stakeholder groups that are involved in the work as well. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we develop a process for assigning teachers to the Virtual Academy who would be best suited for distance learning. And finally, Dr. Margaret Hill asked that we would consider sponsoring the San Bernardino Symphony for all that they do to support students.
All right, Board. Did someone say something? No? Okay, we are now moving forward to 14.1 Adjournment. However, there is an acknowledgement. Dr. Volkamore, is it, will the slide come up? Okay, I'm looking for you on the screen.
I'm here. Can we bring the slide up again, team?
Going to take a moment of silence on behalf of our staff that we have lost. We want to acknowledge them and the families. Thank you so much for that. All right, Board, we are at 14.1 Adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you so much. Our meeting has come to a close. We thank you again to our viewing audience. Please stay safe, and God bless you all. We'll see you soon. Bye-bye.